School committee meeting, please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and good evening to all of our guests. Our first item of business is a CPAC presentation. We have two members here. If you want to join us. Sit right up front, thank you. And we have your presentation ready to go. Being here and starting us off.
Yeah, thank you. Well, thank you all for having us tonight. My name is Allison Sizowski and I'm one of the co-chairs of the CPAC.
And I'm Carolyn Blair, I'm the other co-leader of the CPAC.
And so we're just here to talk for a couple of minutes to all of you and parents within the district about what the CPAC actually is. When I first joined the school, age of my son, I didn't really know. And so what CPAC is, is it stands for the Special Education Parent Advisory Council. And what we do is we meet on a monthly basis with special education administrators, parents, and we talk a little bit about what's happening in the special education department. We get updates from Melissa on what's happening in the school committee relative to special education. And we also speak to parents about issues or concerns that they might have about their children in the special education department and help them either route questions to the appropriate person within special education or even outside of the school district to organizations like the Federation for Children with Special Needs. We also serve kind of as a support group for each other. Special education can be a little daunting. There's a lot of processes, lots of meetings, lots of forms to fill out, lots of evaluations to read. And so it's really helpful to be able to come together with a group of parents that might be either in a similar situation or have experienced what you've been experiencing before you. That's Carolyn for me. I have a kindergarten son, he's six years old, and she has an older child that's out of district, so she's been a very helpful resource for me. And we also offer workshops and presentations for parents on issues that might be coming up in the district. So for instance, the IEP process is changing, so we're hoping to do a session on that in the next year or so. Carolyn, did you want to talk a little bit more about what we do?
Sure. What we do is we meet once a month and mostly on Zoom right now, virtually. We haven't had an in-person meeting yet, but due to the pandemic, it seems to be a little bit easier for folks to meet via Zoom, just for childcare purposes and transportation. And we discuss and learn about the special education initiatives, as Allison mentioned, with the development of the new IEP, development of news and news directly right from the special education coordinator, and our liaison to the school committee, Melissa, also, as Allison touched on, brings us up to date with issues going on with the school committee that relate to special education. We also bring in guest speakers on topics of interest to parents in our district. Some sessions that we're looking at this year are Who's Who in Wilmington Public Schools' Special Education, that's upcoming, the Basic Rights Workshop, which Allison will talk a little bit more about, Preparing for College, Dyslexia Services, and more. And I'll turn it back to Allison.
So if you'd just flip to the next slide.
Sorry.
Right in front of you.
I'm sorry, Allison.
Oh. We can clip to the next slide.
There's a slide deck, so you have the clicker, so you can just click when you're ready.
The green one or the white one that goes to the right?
Red to the right.
One to the right.
One to the right. Look at that. Got it, thanks. Okay. So actually, that's a great segue. Tomorrow is our first workshop. So we're having the Basic Rights Workshop, which we have every single year tomorrow from 6:00 to 8:00. If parents are interested, there's a link to register on our Facebook page, which I will talk about in a second. And essentially what that course is, is it's just a resource for parents and it's really helpful to even those who have been around the system for quite a while to get a more comprehensive overview of special education laws, procedures, evaluations, what the team meeting process looks like, what it should look like, standards for determining eligibility, which is a question that we get a lot from parents, and a lot more. So that's a really, really helpful one, especially for people who are entering newly into the school system. And again, that registration link is on our Facebook page. And then our next CPAC meeting is happening on November 3rd, that's at 6:30. And what happens before every CPAC meeting, we have them generally once a month. Parents will get an email notifying them of the meeting several days in advance with a Zoom link to it. Again, we're still primarily on Zoom, which hopefully makes it a little bit more convenient for everyone to attend. And then we're going to be doing the presentation of Who's Who in Special Education. So this will be really helpful for folks, again, who are new or folks who just have kind of, you know, forgotten who's who, because things change pretty drastically from year to year. So it's just really helpful to understand who to go to if there's a concern or an issue or a need with your child. And we've had that in the past and it's actually very, very helpful. And then, as Carolyn mentioned, we're working on scheduling some additional workshops for later this year, Preparing for College, again, the new IEP form. We're looking at doing a dyslexia center presentation from Shriners. And if parents or anyone is interested in having us organize a workshop around something else, we're very open to that. We really want to hear from parents about what they're looking to learn about.
And next, I'm going to talk about, you know, how can I get more involved? We're always looking for parental involvement in new individuals to join our CPAC and to hear about happenings in the special education department. This is also an opportunity for parents to ask questions and raise new topics, as Allison mentioned, as interest for further discussion. And you can join the CPAC board. Allison and I have been doing that about two years now, and if you're interested in getting more involved on a regular basis. I'll turn it back.
Okay. So how to get in touch with us, how to learn more about us? We're primarily on our Facebook page, which is just at Facebook and the backslash is Wilmington CPAC, S-E-P-A-C. And then our email, we have a Gmail account, because it's just a little bit easier for all of us to have access to it, and it's actually Wilmington, Mass., M-A-S-S, CPAC, S-E-P-A-C, at gmail.com. And that is all we have. If you have any questions, we're happy to answer them.
Thank you very, very much. MJ.
So I used to be the secretary of the CPAC long before I sat in this seat. And I thank you very much for the dedication, because it is a lot of work and it's a lot of questions. And I don't think we'll ever forget that first time when we've got, received the diagnosis of our children and what that path it set off for us. I would, as you know, CPAC is the only subcommittee of the school committee that, you know, that's a parent's advisory, which is also a huge thing. And I think relative, because it's so necessary. One of the, one of the, I'm just going to throw it out there, spit shooting to you. One of, I think, the important things that you touched upon for an upcoming workshop this spring is preparing for college. I also think going into that transition evaluation at the age of 13, which I, you don't, you know, it's one of those hidden treasures in IDEA that you don't really know or see. I think that's huge, because I think that will set off preparing for college and/or the job market. And I think what I feel is really an underutilized working group of individuals is not only through the retail sector, but through trades, because a lot of these kids, if it's trying to find pathways in order for them to build those skills and working, those working skills. And I think we could, it could be a great feeder opportunity if we can align with resources out there in the Commonwealth and/or businesses to offer those resources and pathways for kids on IEPs and may just learn differently, you know. And, but that's just something that I, I know it's very difficult, because there's so much that every, there's so many workshops you wish you could host, just enough time in the school year. But I thank you very much for it, for the time and energy you do invest in all of our kids in that respect.
Of course. And if there's ever any input that you're looking for, we are very welcome and happy to provide input, because we live, you know, the special education process every day. So please don't hesitate to reach out to us as well.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Questions or comments? David?
Repeating too much what MJ said, I just want to thank you again for doing this work. No matter how good our district gets at communication and helping families through the special education process, there's just no substitute and can be no substitute for other parents who have gone through the process and who can kind of just like, you know, hold your hand and, you know, it's not the same relationship and it's absolutely vital. And I was the CPAC liaison for a few years and saw directly how much, how much assistance and comfort that CPAC provided to other special education parents in the district. So thank you very much.
Thanks, David. Any other questions or comments? Thank you very, very much. We're so happy to see that.
Thanks for having us.
We're excited, we're excited. Thank you. All right. Our next item of business, approval of items by consensus. We have approval of minute, September 21st, 2022. Is there a motion? Thank you, Mr. Fenely, seconded by Mrs. Plowman. All in favor? That is unanimous. We have acceptance of Safe and Supportive Schools Grant, FY 2223. Is there a motion? Thank you, Mrs. Plowman, seconded by Mr. Samaha. All in favor? That is unanimous. Warrants, G0809, R091011, L15181920, 212223, FS11121314 and 15. Is there a motion? Thank you, Mr. Turner, seconded by Mr. Samaha. All in favor? That's unanimous. We have warrants, payrolls ending 9/28/2022 and 10/12/2022. Thank you, Mr. Ragsdale, seconded by Mr. Fenely. All in favor? That is unanimous. Finally, sped 0809 and 10. Is there a motion? Thank you, Mr. Fenely, seconded by Mr. Turner. All in favor? And that is unanimous. Our next item of business is superintendent's report. Dr. Brandt.
Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. There are actually four items listed tonight on the superintendent's report. We are going to skip over, however, item B, the strategic plan updates. But otherwise, we'll take these items in order. And if I may, our elementary school principals are here with us this evening, and if I could invite them forward. The first item is the school council improvement plans, or school improvement plans for the elementary schools. We've tried. Yeah, they're going to squeeze in. Yeah. There's six chairs. They're, they are a cozy group.
Sorry, I didn't realize that's what she was going to say.
Then we're going to play duck, duck, goose.
We don't want to leave anyone out. Yeah, duck, duck, goose, yeah.
Perfect.
The intention here over two meetings is to, we're trying to find the right balance between not consuming too much time here at school committee meetings, but, but also to showcase and spotlight the good work and bring attention to the good work that is at the center of some of the thinking on our principals' part and in conjunction with their, their school councils. So tonight, we'll, in the plan is the copy of the elementary school improvement plans. And then at the next meeting, we will have the secondary plans for both the middle school and high school. Over the last couple of years, we really worked hard to try and more closely align the plans. And thanks to Christine Elliott for her work in concert with our elementary principals here tonight, I think we're moving in the right direction, you know, as we try and respectively identify particular goals or strategies at each school that might be slightly different than some of the others, based upon needs, but more aligned than different in terms of the direction that we're trying to move in. So tonight, we don't have a presentation specifically for you, ultimately in the interest of time, but I wanted to take the opportunity to just have our principals introduce themselves. And you have the, you have the full plans in front of you or in the packet for those members of the committee who aren't watching. And if you're at all interested, they are as part of the school committee packet. But to start with, it's a great opportunity. I know you don't get to see them all that frequently. If they could introduce themselves, starting with Miss Bissell on the left.
I'm Bissell, and I am the principal of the Wildwood.
And for our second principal of the West Intermediate.
Diane Carrero, principal of North Intermediate.
Lisa King, principal of the Shawshank Elementary School.
Stacy Scott, saw you guys last time, Woodward Street School.
Kristen Walsh, principal of the Bow.
Welcome. Thank you for being here.
So I think just worthy to note, or worthwhile to note, so first off, the plans over the years have been an adjustment, if you will, in terms of plans ultimately approved by the superintendent of schools, and that's certainly the intention here this evening. I commend the principals and their school councils on working towards identifying these goals as effort to try and drive, drive forward improvement within their respective schools. I support these plans, I approve these plans. But with that said, certainly here tonight for you, if there are questions you have for, for the principals in general about any aspect of the plan or specifically for one plan or another.
Okay. So we can open it up now?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Questions or comments? Mrs. Plowman?
Thank you for all being here tonight. My question was related to the social emotional goal. Shocker. I, I just wanted to check in about the panorama and how people are feeling about panorama. I know we have some new leadership, so you may not, you know, you may not be able to speak to this, but I wanted to, I guess, make sure that three panorama lessons a year is feeling efficient and effective. And I know sort of like a minimum of three is sort of the goal. I just want to make sure that you're being supported well enough from student support leadership around the implementation of that and that we, as a district, are getting, you know, good usage out of our panorama subscription and participation with that. And so I don't know that it's necessarily like a question for folks to answer per se, but just a thought, as I was reading like the plan and the goals and I was a little, and I don't, haven't dove deep into panorama and understood the curriculum and how those lessons play out necessarily, but I guess I had envisioned it happening on a more frequent, regular basis. So that was just a thought that I was having about it.
Want me to take it? Okay. That's why they made me sit in the middle. They told me I had to sit in the middle, so I will take that.
Lisa, sit right there.
So yeah, so panorama is only a year old, you know, a year in the process for us. And although it may only say three times, a lot of our teachers, they feed off of our goals, so they're also using panorama as their own goals to incorporate lessons within their classrooms. The subscription is great. We're very much supported by student support. We have lots of digital trainings. We had trainings last year. The lessons are very short, very easy. One of the first things we have to do is the surveys to see the competencies in each school and each classroom. And then, once we can identify those, so it sort of takes till November just to even identify those competencies, you know, in certain areas, then the teachers can take that data and incorporate lessons within their classrooms. For us, a lot of us are exploring different things when we do morning messages by actually adding a small panorama lesson within the morning message. So we're still in the exploration stage of, you know, playing around with it, finding different lessons, and then doing it, you know, all schoolwide as well. So I think that it's going to prove to be very helpful, but we're still in the learning phases of it and looking at the data to then find the lessons.
To piggyback a little bit on what Lisa said, I know at the early childhood level, the, a lot of the lessons are integrated into that morning meeting or that open circle time. So it's not a heavy lift, and it has been going well over the past year. Our school adjustment counselor also co-teaches some of the lessons with the classroom teachers. When she works in and does whole group lessons, she also does some, again, as Lisa mentioned, when we identify the data, which areas are in need of some support. She does do small group lessons as well, and calls some students to do that, but that's specific work. So we have found it to be beneficial.
And it is a tool, so when we have students that we bring to the IST team or things like that, and then we find that, we can look at that as a tool, and then we can incorporate lessons to the classroom, even if it's just for one or two students. So there's a, is a lot to it, but we're still exploring it.
I would just say, as a new principal coming in, it was great to have that data over the summer, so I could compare where kids started last year and when they ended last year. And then it made me make a mental note of the students that I need to check in with immediately. You know, certainly making relationships with all kids, but thinking about who do I need to hone in on immediately and also bring my counselor onboard as well, making sure that we're both checking in with those students who are, you know, looking a little bit lower in some of the numbers.
Great. Other questions or comments? Mr. Ragsden?
So we're doing the new social studies curriculum this year, and I was wondering, six weeks into school or so, how does it seem to be rolling out so far?
The feedback that I'm getting is that it's very rigorous for grades four and five. I think the teachers are very anxious and excited to get the training, is that next week? The 26th?
We don't have much to add. They're pacing themselves, but they're getting.
Stay tuned, more.
Yeah, they're getting the full training on the 26th, so after they get that, yeah. Right now, it's kind of like, okay, you're going to try things on your own, see how they go, and then they're going to get the training in October, so.
Mr. Turner?
First of all, thank you all very much for coming. And the question I had was, there's, there's a goal in the third one that talks about welcoming and encouraging parents and families back into the schools and into engagement with the school. Have you found the parents are coming back in? I mean, I hope so. I was curious if you're seeing the same or similar sorts of numbers, more or less versus two, three years ago?
So I can say at an early childhood level, our, I've gotten a lot of interest in our school advisory council, more than I ever have pre-COVID. In addition to my parent advisory council, a lot of classroom teachers are welcoming, you know, families in to do volunteer work. We have a lot of parents coming in as, you know, a mystery reader, as a volunteer helping out in the classroom, a volunteer sometimes during, you know, lunch, lunches. So there definitely has been, you know, an increase in parent involvement since, you know, obviously the pandemic. But I would say the interest in the councils is definitely increased even before, you know, numbers from before the pandemic. So it's really great to see. And we welcome everyone in. We would welcome anyone sitting at this table. If you ever want to pay a visit to any of our schools, please come in, take a look, see, see what we're doing, see us in action. There's a lot going on.
I just may, not, not a question, but related to family engagement. You would have seen in the, in the plans, Parent Guarding University, that was identified on a couple of occasions, and most, if not all, I know at this table are involved in that effort. Someone to speak to that, and it's just a good opportunity to bring a spotlight to that, I think, right now. Doesn't have to be you, Lisa.
I know it doesn't, but we all know, no. So, well, Diane was part of it. I think everybody here has been part, is part of it. We've, we've met a few times and we're planning, there's a big group of us, a lot of people who are not here, to do a parent university on a Saturday. It's going to incorporate all kinds of things that we think parents would like to go to, almost like a bunch of mini workshops. Some of us will be teaching them. It's really all in the beginning stages right now. And we are planning a guest speaker and we're just, we're going to build a website and do a lot of promotion about it. So really, right now, it's very much at the beginning stages, but that is something that most of us have on our own personal goals and professional goals that we're going to be working towards.
Correct me if I'm wrong, the plan, I think, right now, the target date is March, the month.
It's in March. We're actually being very creative, trying to plan it right between sports seasons before soccer kicks off and whatever else ends. And we plan on working with the town too, to maybe even free up a Saturday if there is a lot going on and sort of save the date so that families can come. We also are planning daycare for children, so there's a lot, lot to it, but we're, we're just at the early stages right now.
So within the, within the committee, there's then three separate committees formed, so you can kind of tackle all of these things. And I know Diane, you do have some experience with it. I don't know if you want to talk a little bit, but again, you know, we just had a presentation from the CPAC, so really, you know, getting information from families about what it is that they want presented and what help they're looking for, so that we can make sure that we have that available to them in March.
There's a, there are many of us on the committee working on it, and we're doing some fundraising and then some working on advertising and then curriculum and then, there's one more. Oh, logistics and technology. So it's going to be a great group. I think it's going to be exciting. Thank you. Mr. Samaha?
Yeah, I had a question. I mean, actually, first of all, thank you so much. I know that these are a lot of work and there's a lot of time and thought that goes into these, so thank you for putting that time in and for being here. One of the, one of the areas, one of the measurable outcomes, I think it's in, on all of them, is partnering with a minimum of three community organizations. I was just curious what your thoughts were on what those organizations are. I see it says in the resources, like WCTV and a couple others. Is that what people are thinking or?
It's, it's like WCTV, WEF, WOW, the Senior Center, so any type, the library, the food bank, just sort of anything in the community that we can start to partner with in a different way and incorporate the kids and the students, working to help the community in that way.
And more in outside of community, we also do, we've done more patient, we've done birth educators, we've done, you know, pajama drive, we've worked on foster shelters in the past, but really trying to bring in Bay Path, Humane Society, the MSPCA, really trying to coordinate our efforts and really bring in some community partners, not just in Wilmington, but more widely.
I was, I was just really happy to see that. That's a great, a great goal. Thank you. Yeah, I wanted to see kind of where, where we are with the rollout of the MARK anti-bullying curriculum, since that's kind of being reinvigorated this year.
So our trainers are being trained now. They should be trained by, I think, by this week. Yeah. And then we have dedicated two staff meetings in November and December for training of staff.
At the Early Childhood Center. So we don't have students on November 8th, however, we're utilizing that time to train our staff at the Early Childhood Centers on the MARK during that day.
And there is a schedule that, that is being made or that we're working on that has the rollout of all the lessons and everything with dates and so, after the staff is trained.
I also just want to add that I think it's really great that there, I think, is so much more cohesiveness to this planning than, than we've had in the past, that, you know, we're really thinking more about kind of the progression as the students are both moving through the system and then, of course, sort of, you know, a parity and consistency between the different sides of town. You know, in the, in the past, it's kind of been all over and every school sort of felt like a little island. And I think it's great that this is clearly the result of a lot more collaboration.
I think just we're being more mindful around, you know, not only vertically but horizontally as the kids progress through the district, so it shouldn't, you know, we want to make sure there's definitely consistency across all schools.
Thank you.
Megan, I just have a couple. So I'm just curious, so to sort of, in line with what David just said about the process, this does seem to be so much more cohesive. And obviously, you're all sitting here, so it feels very cohesive, but I would just love to know about the process for all of, like, what, if you could just kind of enlighten us a little bit as to what, what was this like and sort of how did you work with your school advisory councils to do this work, I'm assuming separately, but then come together to make sure that you were aligned across town? I'd just love to hear a little bit about that.
So over the summer, we, we met as a district leadership team and we, you know, kind of reflected on the district strategic plan that was created, obviously with COVID. And there was a little pause in that planning, so it was extended by a year. So we, as the district, you know, the building leaders came together, tried to find out where within that strategic plan, where were our successes and what was still work that needed to be done. We then kind of came together again and we said, okay, in this area, we narrowed it down to the, you know, three areas that we wanted to focus on. And knowing that, you know, some of these rollouts looked a little different at every school, that's why some of them were a little, it was a little wider, so we can incorporate everybody. We then determined, okay, these are the three areas that we want to focus on, and how does, what will that look like at each level? And how can we make it something that we could, that's attainable? Because we want to make sure that at the end of this year, what's on that document is going to be attainable and that we're going to be able to reach that and not something that would have to roll into another, another year. And so we worked collaboratively. We brought the ideas back to our school advisory councils. We had the conversations with our school advisory councils, explaining to them kind of the process that happened over the summer. We got their input, with their input, we met again. We edited some of these goals, we revised some of these goals, and then we presented them again and with their blessing. We came down and determined this is the end.
Helpful for all of us, just to sort of envision what it was like. My follow-up to that is sort of what, when there's so much here, I guess, what do you foresee being the most challenging and what do you feel as though you're already sort of on your way, like it feels like it's already pretty, you know, set?
I'm talking that equity audit.
We feel the same way, yeah.
It's a pretty heavy document. It's a 53-page document, and I think there's a lot to look at, and I think there's a lot to understand, and I think there's a lot, as a district, we need to dissect a little bit to determine, okay, this is where we're going as a district, and how does that then filter down into each? and how does that then filter down into each of the schools? So there's going to be a lot of work that has to get done with that. Again, unpacking it, getting our feet wet, but then knowing next year, those goals will be a two-year goal, we can really dive down deep into that work. And hopefully, three years from now, you know, we'll obviously be at a better place with that. But that, I think, and I don't want to speak for the group, but I think that was when we all met, it was, this is a lot, and it's heavy. So how are we going to even begin to get this work completed?
And we have to get it right.
Right.
We feel, and our subcommittee felt similarly, just like, okay, wait a minute, we need to go step, we don't want to miss anything, because there's so much data, and all of it, so it's equally important. So we wanted to really take time within each of those sections to really deeply understand it. So I, I hear that. So thank, and thank you.
We also all wanted to be on the same page with it. So that's really important to us, that when we do do things with our staff at faculty meetings, even if it's like 10 minutes or 15 minutes, we talked about, we're going to share the activity that we do, maybe, you know, Ed comes up with an activity that we're all sharing, and then the next one, we take another piece of it. And we really want to make sure that what we're doing is, we're all doing it together, so we all have the same understanding.
And it's not just on one person's shoulders.
Yeah.
Right. You know, the, that is, it's kind of shared between all of us. And it's having us take ownership of it, and then really feeling that we understand it, because I think, like I said, it is pretty deep. And it's, you know, there's a lot of information now.
Comments or questions? I just have one tiny little thing. On the, well, I gave you all a chance. I said my two things, and I stopped, and I said, anybody else? On the measurable outcomes of success, there's a little bit of like a variation there. Like, sometimes it's like really clear, like what is expected. And I'm sure you've had this conversation. So I don't, I'm not necessarily asking, but if you have any insight, that would be helpful. And sometimes it sort of seems more like action steps, where I'm like, so I'm, and I wasn't sure if that was because we weren't sure of what success, or whose success it was, I guess. Is it the children's success, like their learnings, or is it your, your teacher's success? So I guess for me, just reading it, I was sort of filling in gaps myself. I was like, oh, okay, this must be this. But I just wondered if there was talk around that, like, some of them were like 100%. Three lesson, like, very clear, I was seeing like how we would measure it, and then others seemed a little bit more vague. So that can be a question you can answer, or it can just be maybe something to bring back to the, to your group and, and talk it through.
I think some of it had to do with different schools, like PBIS. It's all really the same thing, but it's done differently in each school, so it needed to be a little more general. We did have that discussion.
Yeah, we were, we were talking back and forth about some of those, because it's not so concrete, like the social studies. Like, you're going to be doing those lessons, or MARK, or Panorama. When it comes to like PBIS and things, we're, we're all following the same format. We're doing the meetings, we're at different places, but the rewards and different process at the, at the West is different than the Shawshin. That's okay. We're still following, you know, but so I think we were a little stuck on that, and, you know.
Also, I think just, you know, some of us rolled out PBIS before other schools, and so we maybe had a different space. Like, so for example, you know, one school might be really down to that tier two, you know, what's that tier two support, what's that tier two referral form, whereas some other schools might be doing a tier one. So to be able to put this in a document that's shared, for us to be able to say, all the schools would be doing tier two, isn't really fair if a school is a year behind the sister school. Or, you know, so I think we had to leave it a little bit, you know, vague in that sense, if that's what you're referring to.
All right, really, is there anything else? I don't have anything else.
Can I have the last word?
Yes.
You know, it's, it's not lost upon me, and hopefully not you. We have three new principals here at this table. And I wish Ms. Elliott were here, because I know she would speak to it more specifically. But there was a point in time in the summer in which I know she made a comment to me, like, I forgot about the fact that we have three new principals. And, you know, right out of the gate, to the credit of our new, our newbies who have joined us, but also our seasoned, but not too seasoned veterans, you know, the collaboration is, what you see here is very much alive. We are so new into this school year, of course, but kudos and thank you to them as a team. And for those parents and guardians and community members watching, we may have six elementary schools, but hard at work to try and, you know, roll in the, in the same direction. And hopefully that's, and I appreciate the comments that you've made to that. And so, thank you, folks, for your, your commitment and your collaboration and for being here tonight. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone. It's nice to see you. I can come every time. We'll always save a seat for you.
They're just exiting. Just a quick comment on, on the MARK program. We do have, although not on the agenda, but I'll just take this opportunity to bring attention to two related things. The next Wildcat Corner is being filmed tomorrow, and I have a couple of folks joining me to specifically talk about MARK and our efforts as a school district around bullying and harassment. So stay tuned for that. And on a related note, on Thursday, October the 27th, I think word has gone out already, but if not, it soon will be this week, as a placeholder. We are holding a virtual parent night that will be recorded. So for those that are not able to attend, but our keynote, our presenter is Dr. Elizabeth Englander, who really founded, not really, who founded the MARK program out of Bridgewater State University. And so she will be visiting with our community. Again, that's Thursday, October 27th. We will make sure that everyone is aware of that. And as mentioned, it's virtual, it will be recorded, and it's, it's really specifically to dig deep into bullying and harassment and, and sort of those, those related topics related to the MARK program, too. So please stay tuned for that. I will move on to the next item, which is Item C, Superintendent's Goals, and certainly a great segue in many respects from the presentation there this evening. There are two items that go along with this. First off, a memo in which I tried to capture the key elements, if you will, from the Department of Education's approach to, or belief in approaching for school committees superintendent goal settings. You can see the memo outlined around the recommendations for the total number of goals, how that relates to the indicators. And then on the second page of that memo, you can see my, my suggestion in terms of a timeline for that. So it has generally been the case that at this point in the year, I would bring to you, or sometime around this point, bring to you, goals for your consideration. Ultimately, these are goals that I'm providing to you as a committee for just that, your consideration, but do want your approval ultimately. As you know, and in this evaluation system in Massachusetts, the goals are certainly an important complement or aspect to the superintendent performance evaluation, and so they are an important, obviously an important topic for you to consider. You can see the timeline that I proposed here, starting with tonight, October 12th, which I would consider as a first read. But I certainly welcome your comments or thoughts or feedback on what changes you might like to see to those goals. And then heading towards November the 9th for a second reading and hopeful approval of the goals. But more to the heart of the matter, so to speak, the other document does provide you with a, an overview of the proposed goals. I've identified four, and again, trying to be very much in line with the Department of Education's suggestions, two district improvement goals, and then one student learning goal and one professional practice goal. Very briefly, you have it certainly in front of you, I know, but under the superintendent, under, I'm sorry, the district improvement goals, the first off is what I think is really going to be an important direction that we take, talking about parent engagement, but it's community engagement, the interest in moving towards administering a culture and climate assessment district-wide. I think that, you know, you really, culture and climate is so vital and so important, I believe, in a, in a school setting, to help support teaching and learning, to help make sure our students are engaged, our staff is engaged, and of course, our parent guardians. And so, as you can see there, my intention to put together a plan for administering a culture and climate assessment in all of our schools. And I think that that's not, you know, at the end of it, about providing meaningful feedback that will certainly underscore the things that are going well in those school environments, but also helping to identify room for growth. And you can see the suggestion there around incorporating that down the road into school improvement planning. The second district improvement goal is around strategic planning. We've talked about this previously, but as, has been discussed, the intention, by the end of the year, prior to the start of next school year, setting our, our course towards developing a new three-year strategic plan. Student learning goal that I'm providing for your consideration is around the equity audit, as briefly touched upon. We certainly have an awful lot of work in addition to that of the members of this committee who are part of the Equity Subcommittee. But there is no question to me that we, as a leadership team, need to, as was mentioned earlier tonight, unpack that audit and really start to hone in on what it is that we think are going to be important components of our, of our efforts and our strategic actions going forward relative to the findings from that, from that report. And finally, the professional practice goal around school community communication. We have, I think, made some very good strides in, in recent times, but we have room still to grow. And in particular, keying in on our efforts as a school community to ensure that our communication is accessible by all in our community. We have certainly a growing population that, for whom English is not the first language or primary language in the home. We have work to do around that, to make sure that our communication is, is accessible and certainly all are able to grasp that. So those are the goals that I have for your consideration tonight. And again, not looking for you to take any action tonight, but I welcome any comments or, or questions or, or feedback.
One question, Dr. Brand, if I could, under the proposed student learning goal, which is the one that focuses primarily around the equity audit. On the far right column here, it looks like Item 3 dot 1A, the formation of an inclusion, diversity, and equity committee?
Yes.
Could you speak to sort of what your view of that is? Who's going to make up the committee? How frequently you'll meet? Just broadly speaking, what your vision for that was?
Yeah, and thank you. And I did note, and that that got cut off the end of that there, so I do need to modify that. But, you know, so first off, this was an item that may sound or look familiar. It was from the original strategic plan. But unfortunately, because of the pandemic, this, like so many others, did not, did not get off the ground. But I, I still want to have the opportunity to talk further with my leadership team around exactly the membership of this. So, you know, I still have some flushing out to do, to be very honest with you. But I most certainly see this as a cross-section of our community, you know, about a team that would involve not just administration, not just our staff, but also some students at the secondary level, and certainly our members of our community, is what I would envision as members of that group.
I had a couple of questions, and granted, I don't think I had enough time to really wrap my head around everything, but I think, I thank you, I think there's solid goals to shoot for. My first question is with regards to Standard 2. You speak about this group, a team, comprehensive educator, staff, and students at the secondary level. And you talk about the school culture and climate assessment. I, just a quick question, is, in being that it's March, which is, which is, I think, timely with MCAS and any other assessments that the students and/or staff may be involved with. I, I just, granted, you can't predict the future, but that's just something that March seems to be a very busy time with MCAS prep, and that I just thought I'd throw that out to you for your thoughts to ponder.
Yeah. That's a really great point, and, and truth be told, you know, I, I still have many conversations to, I still have to have many conversations if I'm moving forward with these goals with our school principals. You bring, in hindsight, perhaps I should have put, you know, the spring as a, as a, some latitude there.
Sure.
It doesn't necessarily have to be March. I think that just the thing that I wanted to convey is, I, I want to make sure that we can have time to develop an instrument or, or, you know, embrace an instrument to use, and that it wouldn't be something we would be rolling out, you know, before winter break. But we want to get through the school year, most of it.
Right. And I, I think end of February is the Youth Risk Behavior Survey that typically is done as well, which may be good in conjunction, perhaps, or not. I mean, it's, you got to tease it out.
That's a good point, yeah.
But something to think about. And then I just asked you with regards to the goals, sorry.
Sorry, I should have numbered these better.
No, 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 that's fine. The third goal. I want to make sure that I'm referencing the correct one.
Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion?
Yes. I just wanted to ask a question, especially because of the, the earlier comments shared with regards to the data that was encompassed. That I know Mrs., Dr. Bryson had spoken about for the Equity Committee to really start breaking these things apart, you know, as, with regards to the report. Would that be really, I, I just, it's a curiosity question. Is that a, do you think that is a viable timeline with all the data and?
Well, yeah.
I mean, considering the amount of data, that would, I think, would be driven by the, this goal.
Well, so I, I, my thinking here is, is that it's going to take some time, clearly, to unpack that. I think that by, again, and maybe designating the dates exactly, March, April is, again, the springtime frame, but I definitely think that we can and should be at a place in which we are entering into the strategic plan, planning process, with sort of some advanced understanding around what actionable steps should be.
Okay.
Coming out of the equity audit. So maybe those dates are flexed or needed.
I'm not looking, well, right, I just.
Yeah. So, but thank you.
Okay, no worries. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Brand, first of all. I, I really appreciate the, particularly the three different goals, one on climate assessment, one on diversity, equity, and inclusion, and one on communication, kind of touching in, in three very major areas. And then also the strategic plan being a very forward-looking goal. I wonder if it would be appropriate to add, or perhaps add, another goal within Standard 2 about specifically the middle school. A U and Dr. Cork did a lot of great work last year, setting the table. But I think in terms of a goal for this year of the execution of all the work you guys did last year, and the follow-through on that, I know it's a lot more tactical than these goals are. And so it's a different type of goal, but it might be an appropriate goal to, to make sure that momentum is carried forward. Because I, I think a lot of great work was done, and I want to, I think it'd be good for that to be part of it, or at least considered as part of the goals.
Yeah, I'll just make the comment that I appreciate these goals. I kind of, you know, look for what's the, sort of the same across them is the, and it's a little bit of what Mr. Turner was saying, but community collaboration and inclusivity is sort of woven throughout all of these. And I, and I appreciate that, as well as the fact that this is very forward-thinking about where, where are we going. So I, I appreciate the goals a lot.
Thank you.
On the communication goal, I wanted to just ask a couple of quick questions. So you, one of the details is to establish a common newsletter platform for consistent format. And for example, you know, right now, the West sends a PDF attachment every Sunday, and the middle school uses the smore kind of newsletter format. At the high school, Mr. Gendron sends a Google Doc link, which I think are all fine. But is the, is the idea to sort of find it consistent and just one, you know, sort of one, you know, the one method to rule them all, that, that all the communication of that type goes out on?
Well, it is, or actually, a couple of reasons. First off, recognizing that, you know, and there's a fine line, obviously, between necessarily wanting to make everyone the exact same, but recognizing that many families have students in multiple schools, completely different looks and feels, can, I'm sure, and is often more difficult to really get at the heart of the communication that is being shared by the schools. That's number one. But number two, there's actually a, a technical aspect that I've come to learn with, can Lord's help, not all documents or tools are, can be translated. And so actually, underneath all of this is the ability to translate. And it's more, it's a little, not complex, but it, you have to think about it a little bit differently. And so embracing a platform that can allow for that, as I've come to learn, not all can. Smores, there's smore, is the name of it, kind of a funky name, but it can be, and actually quite effectively. So quite frank, quite frankly, I think that will probably be the tool, but not just to say we're going to use that, but then trying to strive for that look and feel that will be more consistent across, you know, all, all of the schools.
And then just following up on the same point, so the, in March, it lists, launch the district's first comprehensive community offering that provides an opportunity for members of the community to become informed about the work across the school system. And I'm not quite sure what that.
So, yeah, that wasn't very well-written, I acknowledge that. I would redo that. But But really, the point there being is that it's going to take some time to build this, it's going to take some time to ensure that we have protocol or protocols in place such that any information we're pushing out. And so this gets multifaceted in terms of looking at report cards, looking at newsletters, looking at sort of the gamut of things, and making sure that what we're able, no matter which school you're in, no matter if you're a new staff member joining, you'll have clarity around how this is going to be done. But my my intention there with that is by by that springtime, a lot's happening in the spring, but by the spring point, we should be ready to, I think, to fully transition to that, you know, the newsletter, that, you know, have a more consistent look for communication system-wide.
All right, and I'm happy to see, I'm really happy to see this as one of the goals, because communicating with our community and our families is so fundamental to the to the work we do of educating kids, and and I think it's a really great thing to be thinking really consistently and strategically, to be very deliberate and intentional about our communication. So I'm glad to see this here.
Thank you.
Mrs. Palmer?
Just piggybacking on Mr. Ragsdale around the community and sort of with Mr. Turner, too. Everyone has really spoken to a lot of my my feedback on this already, but I would love to see incorporated into the communication goal, not just a consistent format perhaps, but thinking about, should there also be a consistent expectation around timing of communication? Like, when, you know, when should the weekly newsletter be disseminated? And I, too, would love to see there have some reflection in your goals around tracking the implementation of of the the work at the middle school. So much time and effort and finances were put into understanding where we're at and establishing goals for that. And I know, I don't know that it's appropriate to get into that much minutia, but I do feel like it's such an important thing for so many people in the district to find some way of, like, including that. I was happy to hear Mr. Turner talk about that.
Sure.
Thank you, Mrs. Palmer. Can I go real fast? I, my only, so I think it looks great, my only comment was sort of on the timeline for the strategic plan being finalizing July, August. I just was hope, I guess, a little hopeful that maybe we could do that before the end of the school year. If there's a committee involved, I'm not sure how involved they'll be, sort of with that finalization of it.
Yeah.
So that would, so maybe just a small, maybe I would recommend a small adjustment there, and then just to, same, I would love to see something more specific about the middle school. So that's my feedback. Thanks, everybody. All right.
Thank you for your feedback.
Actually, just one, one more clarification. So I think that.
Bless you.
So these feel like one-year goals, and if we're doing a two-year evaluation, which you've proposed to us, then I think I think it would be a little bit weird for us to, you know, to only be revisiting these and evaluating these two years from now, but adding, of course, adding more goals on the second time.
I was thinking we'd have new goals.
Yeah.
Next year.
Yeah, I mean, that's.
Right.
But the full evaluation would be every two years, but that's an interesting point.
And that language, I will admit, I caught that language, or it stuck out to me in reviewing again the DESI framework or the DESI guidance around that, and actually, if I'm not mistaken, it does bring attention to that very fact, that even with a two-year evaluation cycle, at the very least, goals, the recommendation is there are goals, that maybe there are continuations, but it provides the opportunity for new goals to be introduced, so.
Okay, yeah. I think that, I just want to make sure that we're kind of on the same, on the same page as that, because I think that we would be looking to see new goals, even if some of these are still incorporated into those next year.
Thank you. Moving on from the non-kitting.
I was just going to say, it can, it can be very, you know, very similar to the teacher two-year evaluation process, where teachers develop new goals every year, but it's a two-year, it's a two-year plan, with the end of the year sort of being like a formative and the second one being a summative. So I think that's a good way to think about it.
I just, I just wanted to, I guess, bring to the attention of the community, because I don't think a lot of people access the same documents they can on the district website. But, you know, Dr. Brand is not overlooking his work and responsibilities related to the MSBA project or the school start time change. Those still remain active, working focuses. I think several of us were sort of like, oh, I still want that middle school stuff in there, but those other very big projects that are ongoing, those are not getting lost in in the weeds of all of this other stuff. But you haven't identified them as goals, and I maybe speak to that for the community a little bit.
Sure, thank you. Sure, I can. And, yeah, there are a number of things that arguably, perhaps, you might say, well, why aren't they here? The MSBA is one, the time right now being contended, contending with the Wildwood, you know, that, sure, they, an argument can be made, I suppose, for them to be included as goals, but I see those as just fundamental for for my work in this role, regardless of if they're goals. The start time work, I appreciate you bringing light to that. We just actually met this morning, as that's, we're moving that forward, and you'll you'll be hearing and seeing more of that. We're wrestling with a lot of things, as you know, right now, regarding the Wildwood, so, but at some point before the winter break, we will be talking about that here in this room, again, the start time. So things are moving, I appreciate you bringing attention to that. As I think I said in my closing remarks, it was with intention to try and identify goals that I felt were moving the district forward in a new or different way, perhaps, but not certainly taking away from some of the many other things that are going on. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Item T is the FY 24 budget calendar.
Super quick for you, informational, but we are certainly with Paul's leadership, well underway, well underway already, into planning for the fiscal year 24 or 2023, 24 budget year. This provides an overview for you. It's a draft, but the plan as it stands right now, in terms of the calendar, to plan, prepare, and deliver a school, an operating budget for the school department. It very much mirrors the timeline that has been used recently. I don't think there's been any key fundamental changes. As difficult as it is, it is necessary for us, even at this point in time, to roll out to all of our department leaders and principals instructions for building a budget for next year, having been in that seat, not an easy thing to do, but but it's necessary. It's necessary to go through the many, many steps that we do publicly in the development of this budget, and bringing to you as a school committee and governing body, a budget that ultimately you will will approve. So you can see the timelines here. As I mentioned, things are already underway, and December in particular really will start to ramp up, I think, November, December for this budget. So I'm not sure, Paul, if you want to add anything more, or if folks have questions, but really just meant to be informational, to bring your attention to where we're headed.
Mr. Exton?
Can you talk a little bit about where in this calendar our budget subcommittee would be involved in this process, and just in general, as far as the school committee communicating some of its budget priorities?
Yeah, so we have, so thank you. We have, we have set calendar for meetings for the budget subcommittee. We do have a representative, as I think you're aware, from the finance committee on that. I really, you know, this is a new entity for, a new approach for us, rather, the budget subcommittee, but I really see that as an opportunity to talk a little more, perhaps extensively, as appropriate for some of the budget priorities, as well as some of the other cost drivers, if you will, that will take shape. We obviously have a lot of conversation and will, again, in this room around some of these, but I think that's an opportunity to really take some more time, if necessary. It's also, I think, going to be helpful to gauge having a subset of this committee to be a part of those meetings, to help us as administration identify what might be really important in putting out there this budget story, right? And, you know, I use that term, and it is a budget story, it's numbers, but it's really a story about what our needs are. So the way that we have this calendar set, there'll be an opportunity, there'll be not an intersection, but certainly meetings that will happen in advance of some of these key, these key meetings that we'll be talking more extensively about the budget here.
Can I just add on? So, and I, I would sort of imagine that that budget subcommittee's meeting once, once a month, and then they're bringing some of that back during our subcommittee reports, and that's an opportunity for the full school committee to sort of, so the next thing would be the budget priorities, so that we started talking about at our last meeting, so that would be something that we would bring after our next meeting and say, is this in line with what you were thinking? And of course, at any time, you can contact people who are on that budget subcommittee and say, as you're thinking through these priorities, if you could please pay attention to this, that would be helpful, those sorts of things. And so then, and then we taught, we didn't make a plan for sure, but we did talk a little bit about attending some of these other meetings and sort of being, having representatives in some of that, so that we would have a better sense as to what, you know, some of this looks like with central office review, for example. And so we haven't made any decisions about that, it's still preliminary, but I feel like we're moving in the right direction, and we're thoughtful about how we might become more involved and more deeply understand the process, so we can bring it back to everybody here.
I think that sounds like getting that additional insight from.
I think it would be helpful.
Being able to be in those meetings would be pretty valuable.
My only, can I go, Jay? I promised all of you. My only thought was, looking at this, and I know we have the finance committee representative, but I wondered, so our finance, our meeting with them is in March, and I just wondered if it was possible to also have another one sooner? Is that, I don't know, I know it's never been done, but maybe just for us to talk with them about that, and sort of when we have that, the preliminary budget presentation to the school committee, seems like around that timeframe might be a good time for us to talk with the finance committee, so I would just like to put that out there as something that we we reach out to them about.
Yeah, I think that's a great point and suggestion. I, you know, we ended up last year, if I remember correctly, having an additional meeting with with the finance committee, but certainly, March is well into the process, or well into the timeline. So to the degree that, you know, that if the finance committee is looking for additional information or of any sort, I think that that's an excellent point that is really important here. Yep.
And then that, I mean, I don't, you know, not, well, anyway, we can talk more in the subcommittee meeting.
Right.
Okay, sorry. Mr. Smaha?
That's exactly what I was going to say.
Oh, sorry.
So, yeah.
All right, excellent. So we're good? Okay. All right, thank you, everyone. Our next, I'm not sure that was all superintendent. New business. We have our our joint town hall, school admin, building, and senior center presentation with our consultant firm, so please join us, sorry to make you wait. If it's okay with the committee following that, I think everyone will move to public comment, and then if we could put resolutions under old business. Welcome, thanks for joining us.
Good evening, Madam Chair, committee members. Sit right down.
Thank you.
Dr. Brand, Mr. Ruggiero, you get to run the, you get to run the clicker.
We had, just as, Mr. Hooper, they're getting set. We, we are following suit, just for members who are tuning in, maybe for the first time, of having this presentation delivered to this committee. Last evening, it was at the Board of Selectmen, and and so we wanted to also make sure that viewers of these meetings and this committee as well had the same opportunity to receive some information about some pretty important projects that are before the the town.
Thank you for the opportunity, and for those who don't know me, my name is George Hooper, I serve as the chair for both of those committees. Also in the audience, we have committee members Jack Holloway, Diane Allen, Paul Mellerani, and Director of Elderly Services, Terry Marsiello. Also here, Paul Ruggiero sits on the committee, and we have two liaisons, Mr. Finley and Mr. Turner, they sit on it. Also with me tonight is Dan Pallotta, our OPM from P3. He serves as our owner's project manager for both of those. Lee Morissette from Dietz and Company couldn't be with us tonight, they are the designer for the senior center project. But we have Phil O'Brien here, he's from Johnson Roberts, so most importantly, for the town hall school admin, for you guys to see that. Both projects are equally as important. Mr. Pallotta will go through and present the first project. Right.
One on the right.
Click. There you go.
Nice job.
First of all, thank you, and Chairman, for having us tonight. As Chairman Hooper has indicated, we have been working on these projects since you voted as a town two annual town meetings ago, to have both the town hall, school administration combined and studied and located, as well as a new elderly services center. So we're going to quickly go through, since the architect for the senior center is not here, we're going to quickly go through it. The process for both projects is relatively similar, so I will let all the technical go to the lovely designer to the right left, who will walk you through it, so. But on the senior center, you know, with all projects, and as will be with your new school, we start with programming, a vision of what the the town is looking for, it's a linear form of of information about the needs, what the existing needs are and what the future needs will need to be. Programming turns into a graphic representation of the actual program, and in a size, location of each space in a, in a graphic form. We then start putting the little squares together, and what needs to be next to what? Obviously, the kitchen needs to be next to the dining hall, you know, where do the bathrooms go? Where does administration go? Where's the front door go? What kind of a, what kind of an organization will we have? And that's called a plan adjacency, and that's the the next step. Then we, we start putting all the squares together, and you start getting the looks of a building. And of course, all of these little squares are comments from the building committee, similar to the comments of the school committee on your plans, we get comments from our committee on our plans. So we, we document them, we, we try to correct them, and meeting after meeting, we come to a consensus. And that consensus is this floor plan. It's a new elderly services center, it's 18,800 square feet. It has administration immediately upon reception, and spaces to the left side of the the drawing are programmatic. The big function room is a multi-service room that can be divided into two, for two programming spaces, or have a large event that can be served by the kitchen. Exterior gets developed after the floor plan gets developed, and on this particular project, we are, we added detail to the roof overhangs for passive solar gain and passive solar loss, depending on the season. We increased the entry areas with with some glass to make a pronounced entry, and we incorporated some trellises for shade for the seniors in the rear of the building. This was the pervert design by the building committee, it's, it's maintenance-free exterior, all the materials are prefinished, and we're going to try to build this exactly like this picture. You're going to go in and you're going to go, hey, I remember seeing that. You are going to see it, because it's going to come to you soon, and it's going to come to St. Dorothy's. To the right of St. Dorothy's church is a piece of land that the town purchased years ago for the purposes of a municipal building, and the municipal building that we're proposing is the senior center. There is plenty of parking, there's a drop-off space, there'll be some exterior activities to the, to the main street side, including a botched court, and the ability to have raised planters and grow vegetables, as well as pickleball courts and a walking path around the site. The building, senior center building committee has met 27 times, we've produced a lot of outreach, videos, newsletters, you all get a water bill, you've received the water bill, you're hopefully getting the updates, you're going to get another update in your next water bill about the projects, and it's coming to, it's coming to the vote at the town meeting on the 19th of November. Some examples of the outreach. Our next step is, we're going to have a public information session in this building on November 2nd at 6:00 PM, as well as in the afternoon at the senior center, for all ages to see what it is that's coming to your vote on the 19th. After the appropriation, we go into design development. After the appropriation, we go into design development, construction and bidding documents. We'll receive the construction bids and we'll, we'll build your new senior center. Uh, move them out of the Bozell. Uh, the old Bozell school, which has certainly served this town, uh, well, not only as a school, but as a, uh, senior services building. And, uh, you'll, they'll be relocated over to Main Street. Cost of the project, uh, is seventeen million nine hundred and fourteen thousand five hundred and sixty-one dollars, including the study portion. Uh, we're asking for seventeen million two hundred and sixty-four thousand five hundred and sixty-one dollars at the town meeting. So we're hoping that this, uh, uh, the schools will, will support the senior project. Uh, the seniors have always supported the school projects, including the building that we're in. So hopefully, we can get the, get the seniors into a building that's worthy of the, uh, other end of the scale, so to speak.
So, um, I know you went through that pretty quick.
And I did intentionally.
There was a lot of detail there, but, uh, as he says, we've met over twenty-seven times. Uh, we went over every detail of this building. You don't quite get to see that or appreciate it as much. I mean, even positioning of the building, so the effect of the sun when it comes up, when it sets, uh, the parking lot, the shape of the building, the raised, uh, seam roof, everything that's up on that building has been designed and developed through Dietz and Company with the help and assistance from the committee. Um, the senior center director, Terry Masiello, has been on every aspect of it. So when it came to the programming, uh, we could determine what areas of the building, what quiet activities, uh, and what are the other activities that go on, can be used at night. So, uh, a lot of detail and thought has gone into this project. And we've cut to this, this phase of the project now. And once it gets voted in at town meeting, uh, then we can go towards the actual construction. We'll do the development, design, and the rest of the details up, we can move forward with that.
And I intentionally went fast, not because I talk fast, but because the, this designer on your project's gonna go through the detail in detail. Uh, so we wanted you to have a snapshot of the senior center. Both projects are being voted at the same time. So I'm happy to introduce Phil O'Brien, uh, the designer of, um, uh, the new school administration and town hall building.
Mrs. President. So, um, I just, just have to comment, it's a beautiful building. Um, and it's a well, uh, it nicely sits on that lot. Um, I'm not gonna speak for my part, I will speak for myself. We absolutely, this, the senior center is a town, it's a town municipality. It's not a school committee, it's not a school. We, as a school district, it's two separate entities. As a citizen, I wholeheartedly, and I think it's way, it's such a long time coming that it's finally here, and I'm very excited. And I think that's, speaking, that's the, the pulse of it. But I, and I, and many of my colleagues and acquaintances that I know in this community are very much behind our seniors in this project. So I just, and I know what they do for the community, not just for our schools, but throughout this community. And I'm, I am, I just wanted to clarify that, that we, it sounded a little...
I didn't mean to.
Well, it, it did, and, and I'm just, I'm just sensitive too. But it, it did, because we absolutely recognize the need and the long wait. And our seniors deserve this building without question. And I just wanted to be clear, it, it's a town, um, we, you know, the schools, it's, it's, we are...
You're the town.
We are the, yes, exactly. And but, um, I, forgive me, not to be, I don't wanna be disrespectful, but I just wanna clarify.
If I offended, I, I didn't mean to.
No worries, no worries.
I'm not sure what's hap, what's happening right now, but sure.
Yeah, sorry, Dr. Bryson. One, one quick point of clarification, just for those who didn't watch the, the other meetings that you guys have had recently with, with the select board and the finance committee, just to be, because it's the, it's the number at the end of the slides, and it's an important one. There, the, the point I wanted to make with that was just that the town's select board is deciding, still discussing exactly what appropriation requests to make, right? And there, there will be funding from potentially a couple, few different sources. I just wanted to raise that to the people who weren't at those meetings, that they be aware that, that a portion could be from free cash, a portion could be from capital stabilization, and a portion would be appropriated elsewise. So just, I, I thought that was an important point, because it's such, it's the large number at the end of the...
Very good point. In this committee here, we were tasked with the schematic design. So of course, this is what we present. This goes to the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee. They'll determine how the appropriation is broken out. Uh, I mean, we, we've had discussions on it, but it's not from the, this committee to determine appropriation.
So I'm just gonna, I'm gonna stop us for a second. If you could just help us, if you could just frame this for us. So my understanding is that we are utilizing this space and this time to continue to inform the community about these projects. But we are not taking a vote or discussing... I mean, really, we're just, you, they're utilizing the time and the space to present this. But can you help us, can you just help us to understand how, how this came to be?
How the...
How this presentation came to be here tonight? And what is expected of the school committee in this realm right now?
Uh, informational, specific to these projects. Um, and following sort of the same approach that has been taken at the other, uh, town boards in terms of, uh, providing the time and space to inform the respective boards on both of these two projects moving forward. The next project, obviously, quite near and dear to the operations of our department.
Mm-hmm. But at the end of that presentation, I'm just trying to help us all, 'cause I think we're probably sitting here going, okay, wait, am I supposed to, like, we're not discussing, we can ask questions, but we're not discussing, we're not making any recommendations, we're not doing anything like that.
Totally information.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify.
We're not asking you, so provide information into your audience.
Sure, absolutely, yeah. And that was my understanding, so I just wanted to make sure I was framing that properly.
Yeah, so at the most recent meeting that this committee had, we thought, as they were also presenting this information to the Board of Selectmen, that for this group, it would make sense to just sort of be brought up to speed on the process and where we're at and sort of what the next steps are. So, yeah, informational to George's point.
Excellent, thank you so much. All right, please continue.
So, uh, anyway, again, thank you. My name is Phil O'Brien, Johnson Roberts Associates. Um, I'm gonna walk you through, uh, kind of where we've been and, and what the current, um, design proposal is for the new town hall and school administration building. I, I believe this is the only rendering we have in, in the presentation, so I'm gonna kind of stop and point out a couple of things here. Um, you could see this, uh, from, from where you're kind of standing, the perspective here is if you were standing on the opposite side of School Street, um, looking across the street, um, toward the hill that sits in front of the Bozell. If you look just to the, to the left of the photograph, you can see the Bozell kind of poking out there, uh, behind. So the, the proposal here is to kind of build this building into the side of the hill and pretty much beyond the edge of the parking lot, the way it exists right now. So it kind of sits into that grassy area there and some of the trees on the right-hand side. We're proposing a three-story building, uh, and to the right-hand side of the building, for the most part, is three stories. Um, and then to the left is a, is a larger one-story, um, meeting room area. And I'll point these out as I go onto the site plan and the floor plans a little bit more. Um, first floor and second floor of the three-story section are town offices. Third floor, school administration offices, for the most part. So we began the program, uh, the process, very similar to the way that the, um, that the senior center did, um, with programming. And we kind of came at it, uh, in the same way they did, from a two-pronged approach. Uh, we looked at it, uh, graphically, and we also looked at it numerically. Um, the, we, we began with the numeric analysis. Um, and the, the analysis for the program for each of the departments is really driven by what's planned for each of those departments, how many people are planned for them, what kind of equipment and furnishings they need in order to be able to do their job, what kind of storage they need, how many file cabinets, flat files, variety of different things that happen, 'cause there's so many different departments that are actually gonna fit into this building. Um, and, and the square footage is required by each of those individual things and those people, and the equipment that they need and the furnishings they need is really what drives the program. And each of these departments also includes a little bit of growth space for each of those departments, because we're not trying to just solve the program and space need issues that you have now for town offices and for school administration offices, but we're trying to look to the future to make sure that you don't have a problem five years after the building opens. Um, in the top right, you could see there's a, a bunch of kind of pale blue squares. I don't expect you to read all those things, but that's also the storage for each of the departments. So we're trying to build all that into the building. Um, and then there is a series of shared meeting spaces as well. Um, we go through the same process as Dan described for the, for the senior center. We looked at a variety of different options for how the program needs could be met. We looked at two-story buildings, we looked at three-story buildings, we looked at sitting in on different parts of the site and so forth. We ended up where we are on the site, at the rear of the existing parking lot, basically, in the side of that hill. Um, and so if the center portion, the large portion of the plan there, is the, uh, the, the, the meeting room area on the left, it's the first floor plan. The meeting rooms are kind of shown in a kind of a blue on the left-hand side. And the entrance is, enters into that main lobby, that kind of, uh, larger white space. I don't know that I have anything that I can point out with this, do I? Um, but the idea is, is that the large meeting rooms, there's, there's three larger meeting rooms there. Uh, cable TV, you'll have access to toilets, and the rest of the building can be locked down in the evening so that that suite of spaces could be used and the rest of the building could be secured. Um, if, the doors would be before you get to the stairs and the elevator and the rest of the departments so that people couldn't wander around inside the building. Um, during the day, and when the building is open, you could certainly take the stairs or the elevator up to the upper floors. Uh, and the upper floors are shown on the right-hand side. Again, first two floors for offices for the town, uh, administration, the upper floor for school administration. There are storage spaces that are associated with each, and those are distributed on the floors as well. And they pretty much show up as white spaces typically on the, on the, on the rear or the upper portion of the floor plans. This is kind of a bird's eye view of, of the, uh, site. And you can see the building kind of sitting there at the rear of the parking lot. And the Bozell is, sits behind it. Uh, you can see the town common. Uh, the building that we're in is down on the bottom right. Uh, and right out in front of it is the Roman House, where, uh, a fair amount of your school administration offices are now. Now, the plan is to take this, the offices that are in the Roman House, also the, the offices that are in, um, the arts center, uh, and then there's also some space here that IT uses within the high school. And those are, offices are also gonna move. And then there's some transportation spaces at West that are gonna move here as well. So, um, pretty much all the offices from town hall are gonna move here, but really, offices and, and facilities from four different buildings for school administration that kind of spread out are all gonna be consolidated on the upper floor of this building. Uh, each of the departments, um, and floors will have their own conference room spaces. And then they will also have access to the large meeting room spaces down on the ground floor. Um, the parking lot pretty much sits out, lays out the way it does, uh, now. It's a little bit larger. We've re-laid it out. It's got some trees in it, you'll notice. The, the lower end of it is wide open. We're trying to make sure that we're being a good neighbor. You can see the Fourth of July building is still there. We wanna make sure that there's plenty of space for the carnival and for things like outdoor markets and so forth. The swain green pretty much stays untouched the way it is. Um, and, uh, we're just, again, trying to be a good neighbor. One of the things that we looked at was, there's residential properties on the opposite side of School Street. We tried to put that lower one-story section closer to them so that when they look out there, when they step out their front door, they're not looking at the side of a three-story building. So we're trying to be sensitive to the neighborhood. Um, but we're also looking at trying to build a new kind of a downtown, um, across from the common. The town hall is there, the library is up the street, the high school is across the street. We're trying to, we're, we're looking at, um, uh, at kind of establishing a, a center so that it makes sense for folks when they come to visit.
Also, Phil, there's a increase in the parking spaces, so you will not lose any for any of the student parking.
Yes, we've tried to make sure that we're very clear that we, we, we're, we're trying to accommodate all of the parking spaces that you use for the schools right now, as well as everything that we're gonna need for the new building. So the parking lot has increased in size.
Can I ask a quick question to that?
Sure.
So is there, I know that now with the town hall space, there's a lot of town vehicles parked well, between those vehicles, those who are coming to work now, 'cause you've got three floors, um, of offices and employees, along with student parking. I just, I'm just trying to rationalize how we're not gonna lose parking spaces for students with, um, town vehicles being on site, with, you know, employees coming in. And, and that's, uh, and, you know, and then you got, um, residents coming in and out all day. I just wanted to, you know, traffic patterns and things like that. I just wanted to make, I'm having difficulty wra, wrapping my head around, 'cause I'm looking at...
Sure.
You know, minus that, that space for the, the building. I know you're going into the building, but...
Okay, so, um, I think this slide here is... So there's the, the floor plan. So we're looking at, um, uh, the site plan. We've got, we're looking at three hundred spaces. And the planning there is, you've got two, about two hundred and forty-seven spaces there now. Uh, there's, so there's a net add for this, for fifty-three spaces. Um, a hundred and forty spaces are, are required for the, for the town hall building itself. Um, and that leaves a hundred and sixty spaces available. And that is not counting anything that happens at the Bozell. There's an additional forty spaces at the Bozell.
Okay.
So we, we're trying to be sensitive to that. Um, we understand that you typically will have between a hundred and fifty and a hundred and sixty people, um, using this parking lot for schools right now. And so we're trying to make sure that you have everything that you need for both of those buildings. Uh, and the hundred and forty spaces really comes from the, the zoning bylaw. Um, and it's actually, when we, when we, when you count up the, the number of offices and the number of people that we have that we're planning for the building, and, um, and of course, now that I've said that, I'm not gonna remember that number right off the hand. But when you include those folks, plus the number of guests that you'd expect to see to come to a, to a meeting during the day, um, we think we've got plenty to accommodate that. And we, we envision that there'll be large portions of the parking lot that we open during the day.
Next question, any concerns with regards to when schools let out? Because it can be a little, traffic can be really impactful at that time of day.
Sure.
Maybe not so much during the summer, but when the school bell rings, that's a lot of cars trying to leave all at once. And so that was another, it may be too early in the conversation for the planning committee, but I just didn't know if that was considered, um...
We did consider that. That was part of the conversation, and it was actually one of the drivers for why the building isn't out on Middlesex Avenue. Um, what we tried to do, one of the benefits, we think, of putting into the hill is that it opens up a little bit more flat space for parking in the front of this, in the front of the site. But also, it means that folks that are working at or visiting the town hall are gonna park on that side of the parking lot. And that large portion of the parking lot that's pretty much open in front of the Fourth of July building is closer to the school. And we think just naturally, folks are gonna wanna park closer to where they wanna go. And we think they're gonna exit out that way for the most part, whereas folks will probably go out on the School Street when they're visiting the, the town offices, especially when traffic gets busy, when school gets out.
Can I just ask, what I will invite you to do?
Yes.
Is just look, look at the, when school lets out.
Traffic study.
I would, I, in, in saying this, and maybe as you go along and final, you know, once we get to the next stages, to, to actually look, look what that actually looks like.
Sure.
Only because I think, I think, um, you'd, you'd have a, a closer hypothesis as to what that could look like.
Sure.
And possible, any, especially in the planning stage, there's any, you know, tweaks to it. Um, that's all I ask it, because I think getting a visual of what that actually looks like.
That's a great idea.
Also, MJ, just, uh, in the rear of the building, second floor, there is another entrance. And the thought on this here was, uh, employees can also park in the back and service deliveries will come in the back, so...
I think it's a good idea if, like, the town vehicles were in the Bozell, utilize that, you know what I mean? So they're not in the midst of cup incoming and outgoing...
Sinage and stuff, I'm sure.
Young drivers and mature drivers and...
They all start at some way, right?
You know. Thank you very much. Sorry to interrupt.
No, not at all. I, I think I was pretty much done.
You, you, you were done? Uh, the committee has met twenty-seven times, just like, uh, the other committee. Uh, and, and we also have had a community information session in July. And again, repeating that we're gonna have another community information, uh, session in November 2nd. Um, we have done outreach, we've done newsletters, we've done the wa, the water bills. Uh, there is some videos floating around on the existing conditions, especially the Roman House. Uh, and, uh, yet the, the Arts Building and the, the existing, uh, Glen Road Town Hall.
Also on the town website, you can find out any of this information. And the flyers, when they do come out, they have QR codes that'll lead you to a lot of this information. So, uh, it's all out there.
Very similar, uh, next steps. Uh, the one step that I didn't put on here is that we are meeting with the finance committee on the eighteenth to get those final details on how, uh, how the funding is going to occur. You know, which portion of it will be, uh, will be free cash. cash, which portion of it will be stabilization, which portion of it will be raised in appropriate.
That's a public hearing.
And that's a public hearing also on the, on the 18th with the finance committee. So after appropriation at town meeting, we, we do the same steps, design development, construction documents, we receive bids, we build the new Town Hall. Probably going to take about 18 months to build the Town Hall, school administration building. So, you know, we've got a long, we've got a long road ahead of us before we can get you out of the Roman House. Cost for the Town Hall project, including the study, which you appropriated two years ago, was $37,835,766. We're asking at town meeting for $36,880,766, subject obviously to the finance committee hearing.
So during the 2020 town meeting, when we made the appropriation for, for this project, as you, you can see this one was 955,000, we've only expended about 50%, I would say.
A little less than 50%.
For both projects. Any questions?
One, one particular thing, to the, to the outreach you've already done, the video you did of the Roman House in particular, I think is really an important thing for people to see, to understand the current conditions. And, and the, the other side of that also is, the, the, if we don't do these projects, what happens next with where we are with our current building structures and infrastructure, and the potential costs to retrofit Glen Road and/or build something different for the school administration?
Absolutely, something we're working on also, and with WC TV, you've seen some of the video clips that are out there, a lot of tweets will go out there, and the what if, right? So, you know, a lot of people say the Town Hall, you know, will suffice, but the, the Roman House will not suffice, that absolutely does not. And the way that the school department is spread throughout the town, this here will consolidate it, make it more efficient. Bring in MJ.
Just a really quick question, forgive me. So I know that you had just talked about the space within the Town Hall with regards to allowing for growth, like employees. Are you able to break it down to like, especially the third floor, because that's one of the bigger focuses I'm more familiar with, what's the percentage of that flexibility only, and I say that only because we have certain departments that are growing because of need, students with disabilities, for instance?
Sure.
I just wanted to make sure that we're not going to, five years from this, we're not going to run into spatial issues and all the paperwork and, and forms and those things that do come along with that department, that proper storage and things like that. So I, I didn't know if you can give me like a guesstimate of when you say that, taking into account growth?
We, well...
And if you can't answer, that's perfectly fine.
Actually, Paul actually worked with us pretty closely in, in developing this, and so Paul, jump it in if he can help me, but I think what the plan was is to make sure, I know Paul's saying, "Thank you, Phil."
I think the bus just left.
Because programming really happened months and months and months ago, and so once we get to a point where we, we've got it down on, on, I was going to say paper, I used to draw by hand, once we have it down in the computer and we start laying it out, we begin to move it around and, and the numbers are not as critical once we've established them. And so it's hard for me to answer that. But we needed to make sure that there was at least a person or a spot in each of the departments for growth. But the other point that I wanted to make is, is that we also had a discussion about the amount of storage in the building, which are those white spaces. And there was a discussion about whether or not you wanted to plan for that storage in the building, or whether you wanted to plan for the storage off-site somewhere, whether it was another building, or whether it was something that you rented, or whether you wanted to consider the future where you might become more and more electronic with, with some of your files. Obviously, some things need to be kept in hard copy and some things, but some things don't. And so the idea was, is that we would include that storage in the building right now, assuming that maybe at some point in the future, you may begin to store more of that electronically and have less of a need for paper copies, and then you would have that storage space potentially for growth, and you can expand into that space.
And also, when we did the programming, not just for the Town Hall, but for the school department, we interviewed each department individually so we could, we could see where they are, where their expectations, or where they were heading, so we could anticipate any growth with their input also.
Oh, I, and I appreciate that very much, it's, it's the unexpected that I
Oh, absolutely.
I find in this, I mean, you've got, you can't always plan for everything, but I just, just seen trends over the past decade, so, thank you, gentlemen.
Sure, thank you.
I don't really have a question so much as sort of a comment, just on this, on this process. I think, I mean, I 100% support the senior center, I think that makes a lot of sense. But because this is, our focus is on schools, I, I understand the state of the Roman House and the need for something to be done with that space. Town Hall, I'm not so sure about. But you talk about old buildings and our schools, right? Wildwood School is, we already know what's going on there, but Boutwell, all of these other schools, we need to be thinking about that, especially this board, we have to be thinking about that. And those buildings, right now, I think about, my son, we was in third grade, sitting on the top floor of the Woodburn Street School, 90-something degrees up there, can't concentrate, he's got headaches, it was, you know, you think, I, I, I think about this, and I think, oh, this would be a really nice space for Town Hall. And then I think about my son, you know, he's 6'4" and a junior now, but when he was a little kid in third grade, you know, that's what I think about, and we have to do something about the schools. And I don't necessarily know if the, you know, Town Hall is where I, as a resident of the town, community member, want my money to be spent. I would prefer it be spent on the schools. So, it's not, it's not a, um, it's not, it's not a comment on any of the work that you guys have done, I, I appreciate, I appreciate it, but I just, I feel like I need, that needs to be said here, especially in this forum.
I, I certainly appreciate where you're coming from, and, and I, I understand the point greatly. My only comment on that would be, I, I think as a town, we really need to take a much longer view, and we need to, the short answer is we need to do yes, we need to do both. The, the facilities we have for the people that work and support our schools are insufficient. Frankly, the Town Hall is not any better. It's, it's, it's got serious deficiencies, it's not the right size, it's not the right space, it's not in any good shape, it requires, it will require millions of dollars to fix. That said, clearly, we have a long-term, significant need to fix the buildings our children are in. I 100% agree, but I don't think we can be thinking in terms of either or. I really do think as a town, we need to take a step forward in terms of doing the right things for both. And I, I think these, these projects are important, but I think it's critical that we not lose sight of fixing the collective elementary schools. It's not one, for sure. And I think we need to support those as soon as we can, there's a process with them. I mean, basically, the day after Wildwood has its result, whatever it is, ideally consolidation, we should be on the next project, and it should follow, we need to keep George busy. So that's, I, I wanted to say it in that way, that, that I understand where you're coming from. 100%, we need to fix the buildings our children are in, but I don't think we can really, as a town, keep pushing this off, because the cost of not doing anything is going to be so high. There's going to be a day we can't walk in the Roman House and use it anymore. And replacing that on the fly could be really expensive, as we learned, replacing buildings on the fly is not cheap. And so I, I, I want to clear, provide that sort of context, that, that I, I think the answer needs to kind of be yes to, to both of them, both this building and schools. And I know that's a tough thing for people to hear, for sure.
Good point, on that point, these buildings do serve our community. We might not be in the Town Hall every day, but it, it does serve our community. For the efficiency, you might not go to the Roman House, I know you people do, but a lot of the taxpayers don't, some people may never step in there, so they, they would say the same thing. Our schools are equally important, I mean, they, they house the future of our community. So, we're working on, on the same projects going through. Hopefully, we can all work together and get these, get all these projects done, so we can have state-of-the-art school buildings, like the one we're sitting in now. So hopefully that the, the Woodburn Street in the north, and the Shawshank in the west, and the Boutwell, they can all be consolidated or brought up to speed, so they can serve the generations to come. Great time that we're in right now, and we have the opportunity to do these projects. If we don't do them now, we're, we're going to have to do them. If not now, when? We've looked at costs, what they're going to be. These two projects moving forward, they're going to be through the tax levy, so they're not going to affect the NSBA process that we're going through. That's going to move through, and I do agree, once we get through this one, there's going to be another one, because all of our schools were built all within the same timeframe. Back then, those residents had the foresight to move out of those single-room schools and those four-room schools of Woodfield and Walker that we had, and then they built our north end to maybe have Shawshank on Woodburn Street.
One year after, another year after, another year.
Absolutely.
Twelve within 12 months.
They took it upon themselves.
They did?
At that time.
Because it's a priority.
Right. Those are the seniors, and now it's our turn.
No, it's our children that, the seniors most definitely, without question, but our children are the priority in this community.
Absolutely, absolutely. Now it's our turn to do the building, get this done.
Appreciate your support and your work.
It's, it's really understandable why people could, you know, blant at some of the costs and also in general have different opinions about the priorities, when I think that's a lot of, like, no one denies that we need to do these things, sometimes it's just about like, well, what, you know, what's the line, what's, in what order do they go? But it's like, we have to take care of these buildings, it's like, because we didn't for so long is why we're in this position now in the first place, that for, you know, you know, decades, we just didn't build elementary schools and, you know, didn't build other municipal buildings. And, you know, it, it, again, lots of different opinions that I respect on both sides in terms of what is the proper priority and order in which to be tackling these projects, but we have got to get moving on some of these, or it's just going to get worse.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, thanks so much.
Thank you for being here this evening.
Madam Chairman, I just want to thank Jesse and Stephen for coming to 27 long meetings and going through all the programming and, and making, and Paul and Lieutenant, to making, making sure that, you know, the needs of the school administration were carried out, including growth.
Thank you.
Hopefully with many more, right?
Thank you for being here.
Thanks, guys.
All right, I'm going to just take things a little out of order. The resolutions, too old business, and so that brings us to public comment, Mr. Ragsdale.
We have one person signed up for public comment tonight, Alexandra Neville. State your name and address before we can hear them.
Hi, I'm Alexandra Neville, I live at 215 Chestnut Street. There is a common expression that goes, those who fail to learn from history are doomed to repeat it. We educate our children in history and social studies from an early age in hopes that they can learn from the past. Tonight, we'd like to talk about that part of the past. The recent equity audit done by the Wilmington Schools gives us a great cache of data on students' thoughts and opinions about how their schools are functioning. Part of that report states that students identifying as Hispanic, Latino, and multirace are less likely than their peers to report a sense of active support. With Latinx Heritage Month ending on October 15th, we want to present a part of our history to show support. Many of us know that the heroic image of six-year-old Ruby Bridges entering a New Orleans school with US Marshals by her side as she broke the segregation divide of the New Orleans schools. I would venture to guess that most do not know the story of 11-year-old Sylvia Mendez, who 12 years prior paved the way for the Brown versus Board Education case and for Ruby Bridges to enter that New Orleans school. Mendez was the daughter of a Mexican and Puerto Rican parents and grew up in Westminster, California. The family moved there so her father could tend a farm that belonged to the Munamitsu family. Due to their Japanese ancestry, the Munamitsu's had been imprisoned in an internment camp. After attending a segregated kindergarten, Sylvia's Aunt Sally attempted to enroll Sylvia, her brothers, and her cousins in the local school for the next year. It was during this enrollment that Sally was informed that her children appeared to be white enough to attend the school, but Sylvia and her brothers were too dark and would need to attend the Mexican school. The school for Mexican children in Westminster was a two-room wooden shack in the middle of the Mexican neighborhood. The school for white children about a mile away was a brick and concrete structure with manicured lawn. The difference in education at the two schools was immense, but the laws at the time made this disparity acceptable for American schoolchildren. Sylvia's parents had the courage to sue the school for the right to have their children attend a nicer school. To avoid a court battle, the school offered a compromise. They would allow the Mendez children to attend, but no other non-whites would be allowed at the school. The Mendez family refused this offering, believing it was important to help more than just their own children. The Mendez family won their initial lawsuit, then upon appeal, an NAACP lawyer named Thurgood Marshall took note and jumped in to help. Seven years later, Marshall would use arguments from the Mendez case in this argument in front of the Supreme Court in Brown versus Board of Education. The Mendez family eventually won their appeals, and in 1948, Sylvia was allowed to attend the now desegregated schools in California. In recent history, Sylvia's parents, Felicia and Gonzalo, have had two schools named after them, and they were featured on a US postage stamp, and in 2011, Sylvia Mendez was awarded the Congressional Medal of Freedom. While this story is not widely shared in this area, its importance cannot be understated. Without the courage of the Mendez family's segregation in American schools, may have continued long bef, beyond 1960. There is a rich history of Latinx Americans making their mark on this country, and we as a community should take more time to highlight the members of that community that we so often don't talk about. Teaching history and social studies is meant to enable the minds of our children, allow them to walk through a world understanding that is bigger than their own experiences, teach them that all voices should be enabled to tell their stories, and all ears be enabled to hear them. Thank you.
Thank you. That is all, we have signed up, is there anyone present who would like to make a comment connected to one of our agenda items?
How you doing, Phil, by 524 Shawshank Ave? I appreciate you guys implicating the Alice program, I think that's very important, it's a tough thing to deal with. In one of my kids' open house, I noticed in my, both my kids' classrooms, that there's no locking device on the doorknob. Some have a, a keyhole on the outside, right? I think you're talking, spending $32 million on the city hall, why don't you just take 10 grand out of that and put it, put locks on the doors? I mean, that should be in the budget. The superintendent's speaking that, you know, you flee the building first, if you can't flee, you lock it down. How are you going to expect these teachers to lock down the classroom if there's no locks on the doors? You're going to be, I can't even get in my house fumbling the keys, might have to go to the bathroom. You expect them to go out into a hallway with someone shooting at them, turn a key, and then go back into the classroom and shut the door behind them? I talked to the principal, she said some, some lock this way, some lock that way, I mean, you're teaching them an Alice program, it should be a standard. Every doorknob should be the same, you should be going through it, practicing it, I mean, when, when minutes count, seconds matters, or when seconds count, minutes matters, one of the, one of the two, right? I just think that it's like, it should be on the budget, it should be looked at, I'm only talking about the Shawshank Elementary, but if any other elementary schools, I walk through the schools, if they don't have locks on the doorknobs on the inside, right? I mean, that's crazy to even think about. And now I brought it up, so what if something happens? Right? What are they going to say, oh, well, we told them to barricade it? You get one, you get one teacher teaching elementary school, and then I come in here and they're all holding signs, you're teaching Alice this week, and you, these are the people that are going to prevent the massacre. And they're holding signs. And they're holding signs saying that they're not getting paid. That breaks my heart. These are, my kids are going to school. These people are going to protect my kids, and they're holding signs in there. I mean, that's crazy. Right? And then also in the Shawshank Elementary School, you walk into a classroom, right? There's no locks on the inside of some of the doors, I guess. I have no idea. Someone should look into that. But in the back, there's doors that go into every classroom with no locks. So now, if we all learned from Uvalde, nothing's going to go as planned. There's going to be a flaw in the system somewhere. Door's probably open, someone gets in. Now, if they get into one classroom, they can run down every classroom on that whole side of the hallway. Every classroom connects. So you have one mishap in one classroom, and you're in all of them. I mean, that blows my mind that no one's looking at this. And you're holding, you know, I like the program, but I mean, if we're going to do it, we got to do it right. Talking thirty-two million dollars on the City Hall, I mean, go look through, walk through the schools. Thank you.
What's your lesson?
Please come forward.
Hi, Jane Woods, Seventeen Fairview Ave. I didn't have any intention on speaking tonight, but as I watched our stakeholders from the town and stakeholders from the school, here we are. My colleagues and I sit, wow, fighting for a living wage, and for the second meeting in a row, public comments have mysteriously been pushed to near the end of the agenda, when public comments traditionally take, if you do your math, three minutes you're allotted. I haven't really seen more than five people. That's fifteen minutes. That's a very small piece of your time. But yet, here we are again, waiting two hours into your meeting to just sit and wait and show you that we continue to campaign for a living wage. The town hall, the school department, the teachers and their initiatives and their projects are all let in and welcome to speak. I just don't understand it. I will never understand this, how we are again disrespected. And no sorry to make you wait. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Say something? Sorry.
My name is Katie Callahan, Twenty-seven Dayton Drive. I didn't have anything planned, just the spur of the moment. This came to me. Listening to George Hooper, I applaud the senior center. My mother, like, my mother will be there someday, so I'm happy for that. They've voted for the schools all these years, so their time has come, so I'm happy for that. But I sit here, you know, I am from the Wildwood School. I do not have a school right now. We are all displaced. So we're going to build this great town hall, and we don't know what our future is. And no offense, I know you're trying to figure it out, but this is so frustrating, so frustrating. I don't know where I'm going to be. We don't know where we're going to be. And then, I just, I'm sorry, I just have so much, I just so much on my mind. And then he just reminded me, like, so here today, I have this little girl crying in tears for the Alistro, and I'm holding her, and I'm in my head, I'm like, God forbid, something happened. I am here for these kids. I, they'll be fine. Like, I can tell them, like, honey, you're going to be fine. You're going to be fine. Because I would be there. I would throw myself in front of these kids. But I am making nothing, nothing. How is that fair? Sorry, sorry, guys, you're out of control. But still, sit down in that room.
All right, that brings us to the Wildwood Study preliminary report. Dr. Brand.
Okay, under old business, I certainly don't have to speak alone on this. There's a number of folks who also around this table have been a part of this. But just to bring the committee up to speed in terms of what has transpired and where we are relative to the study. I just want to make, again, the important distinction. When we talk about Wildwood, it's easy to confuse two somewhat parallel tracks that are ongoing. That is the MSBA project, and then there's also the study that has been supported by the consultancy of Doran Whittier. First with the study. The Wildwood Building Committee met last week. I forget the exact date. Again, thank you. On that committee, again, just as a point of reference for those who might be tuning in, on the Wildwood Building Committee includes representation from the school committee, the Board of Selectmen, as well as the Finance Committee, in addition to school and town administration. At that meeting, Doran Whittier, the consultants who have been supporting us in this effort, presented their findings. It includes a shorter list of options. Those options have been narrowed down from sixteen originally to eight. And again, this is all aimed at trying to provide the town and the school department with possible viable options to consider for the short-term support of the Wildwood School until a new building is brought online. Again, this time period of approximately five to seven years, maybe it's five to six, but it will not be any less than five for certain based upon the requirements of the MSBA process. At that last meeting, in addition to the options, also information was provided around the costs, the cost estimates for the options. And I think it's very suffice to say that everybody, including those who are gathering these figures, were very shocked and taken back by the overall costs. I can't explain as to exactly why or what has driven those factors, but I think it's probably fair to say that it is what we are seeing in our daily lives to a magnitude of many, many times over in terms of construction costs. And so the conversation around that table with Wildwood Building Committee fairly quickly shifted to sort of really trying to hone in on a possible return to the Wildwood School with some degree of more minor, if you will, renovations. The Wildwood Building Committee gave some, I don't know, marching orders, but homework, if you will, for the administration as well as Doran Whittier. And in particular, that homework included further exploring what, from a building code standpoint, might need to be considered necessary to renovate at the Wildwood School, should a return, should that be an option to return there? Gets rather complicated in terms of all of the various codes that might be triggered based upon any kind of renovations or work done at that facility. So some homework and due diligence is being taken on that specific front. In addition to that, we were asked to bring back some sense of the Wildwood staff in terms of, as we're grappling with these options, what might be considered most important to them, and also, you know, what would be a level of comfort, if you will, from a health standpoint around a possible return to the Wildwood. We actually met my team, and I met with the Wildwood staff this afternoon. So there's work ongoing in the background. The next steps include bringing back together the Wildwood Building Committee on October twenty-fifth. That meeting was actually just arranged today. At that meeting, this homework will be brought back for the committee's consideration. And internally, we're continuing to explore what, if any, other options might be or should be put on the table for consideration. There's some other, there's a lot of factors to this. It's pretty complex, as I think you know. I mean, I guess I'll pause there, but one last point before maybe others, if they wish to chime in. We still have this arranged, or this arrangement, I guess, if you will, of having the Wildwood Building Committee receive these options, sift through them, and make a recommendation to this committee. Originally, that was scheduled to be on October twenty-sixth. As you know, we've had some date changes with our meetings here, and those dates, that date is no longer on the books, and that's been pushed off until November. But the same arrangement, if you will, still is intended here, and that is to say, the Wildwood Building Committee will receive this report, and they will, we're envisioning that they will make a recommendation to the school committee here for your consideration, upon which then you, as a committee, will make a final recommendation and decision. So we have two meetings back-to-back in November, November ninth and November the sixteenth. And it's possible that that will line up with those. If more time is needed, if more information is necessary to be gathered, then we'll have to adjust these. So we're sort of looking at this as fluid and flexible, if you will, but still with the intention of a recommendation and report coming to this committee from the Wildwood Building Committee. I know I just threw a lot at you there, but there's a lot of work in the background that's ongoing, and I'll pause for questions you have or for others who are part of the effort.
Mr. Turner.
Dr. Brand, I, watching the meeting the other day was exceptionally frustrating, primarily because I understand these numbers are a gut punch, and I took it the same way. But the conversation around the table devolved almost immediately to, how can we take the cheapest option and make it cheaper? Not, I know there were comments about educationally appropriate, but the entire conversation appeared to revolve around, what's the way we can save the most money, spend the least money, without the focus on the children? And so I know the logic of diving into option one, the renovation of the Wildwood, as the primary focus going forward. But I have a concern that if we take that option and we get it ready for day one, we'll still have unexpected costs on day sixty or day three hundred and seventy-two, while we're still got the five-year period. Whereas the twelfth and sixteenth options, the next two most, least expensive, have newer modules, modular units, that could be, first of all, reused and have additional benefit beyond the five- to six-year period. And second of all, are relying on buildings that are in at least moderately better shape than the Wildwood to start with. So I was very frustrated with that meeting. And also, the idea that the modulars, in many regards, are at least as good as the existing middle schools in terms of quality. I've been in one recently, a very new module. They're nice, especially once outfitted, nice facilities. They're not ideal. They're not a new building, but they are a very reasonable alternative and would be significantly, arguably significantly better than any classroom in the Wildwood, no matter how we'll renovate it. So we potentially have something that's slightly more expensive upfront, but a long-term asset that we could reuse in the second and third, potentially, building, rebuilds we have down the pike. And so, and probably have less ongoing maintenance than the Wildwood as rebuilt. So I found that meeting very frustrating, and I would really, really like to understand if we can look at not just the first day in the door at Wildwood, and not just the cheapest way into the Wildwood, but doing it right for the kids, and what will it cost over five or six years of maintenance? Because in theory, the modulars should have far less maintenance over a five- or six, even ten- or fifteen-year period, where we could reuse them, as opposed to the Wildwood in that five-year period. I think the five million dramatically undersells the Wildwood costs. Sorry.
And just a segue, it also, if, I just think it's throwing good money after bad in even considering renovating or doing any renovations with the Wildwood. I know this will be a discussion for another time, so I don't want to, but I think we need to, we've been, I've only heard we've been property poor. This Wildwood could be a potential site for the new school, or however that could look like. There may be other sites. But I think we're, I would like to keep that option open as to reutilize it as a school site, if that's, you know, if that comes down. But the other aspect, and again, I'll try to be brief. I think the priority is staff and students in the most appropriate and best learning environment that we can offer them, and less disruption to families. Having kids go from, having children in both sides of town and trying to be home for childcare and work, I think is really a lot to ask. I know that parents are juggling it now because of the temporary movement, and we just didn't have a better plan. But I really have to say preliminarily that the, in looking at the cost estimate summary of options and what the options are related to, I think number ten at this juncture is my favorite, unless I'm convinced otherwise. And number two, because it's the least amount of transitions with kids and staff that we would only transition back. And that's another aspect, is, you know, staff moving classrooms along with students. You know, if that's not going to be a permanent fix, I just want to minimize, you know, we're talking about transitions anyway throughout our schools. I think that needs to be factored in as we look at these options and consider costs, if I'm articulating that correctly. Thank you.
Yeah, I think it's along the same lines is the options that consider grade reconfiguration, yet we don't know exactly what the Wildwood School is going to look like. Does that mean we're going to have a grade configuration, you know, redo, you know, next year? And then in another five years, like, I would prefer there to be a more steady, you know, a steady thing as well as keeping, like, you know, the cost down. So I guess, so I guess my question is, Mr. Turner, I think you were talking about, like, the hidden costs of the limited renovations of the Wildwood. Are we, can we assume that every one of these options is going to give an appropriate educational, you know, setting, classroom experience for our kids? Can we assume that with each of these options? Like, it's not like we're going to do limited renovations of the Wildwood and then be like, oh, my gosh, this didn't work. We need to, you know, do something else. Like, are we, we're expecting that, correct? I mean, is that something that I can assume?
I mean, I mean.
Realistically assume. I mean, I know you can't predict.
I think certainly with all of the other options, I mean, I guess it's how you define, what did you use in terms of the word for phrasing of the description of the appropriate?
But like, like, a reasonably appropriate classroom setting for the age group. Is that what we're getting with each of these?
I believe the right, I think the answer to that for all of the options is yes, with a caveat of, or sort of an asterisk of, how one might define that for the Wildwood. That is to say, you know, there may be, and I think that there are, different visions of what would need to be done from a renovation standpoint to that facility. And I say that not just through the eyes of a staff member, but also perhaps through a community member in terms of what is believed to be, that needs to be done to make that space appropriate. So it could differ in different people's eyes, but I think that's, yeah, by and large, for the rest of those options, certainly, yes.
Connecting to that, like, some things that we've identified as weaknesses of the Wildwood that kind of influenced, you know, the whole MSBA project, wouldn't be able to be addressed by this. For example, that there aren't, you know, small places for pullouts and, like, we're not going to create new spaces. Like, the idea that, like, it doesn't have modern educational spaces, wouldn't be addressed. But, for example, like, the heating system would be replaced, because the boilers are just, you know, it had, the school had to close over the winter because, like, the heat was off. And so it would be like, actually replacing the heating system, taking down the ceiling or putting in a drop ceiling, which is also one of the issues, dealing with, like, some of the leak issues. You know, the biggest problems we had at the Wildwood were that the condition of the building was in such poor shape that things like this, where you'd actually get, like, you know, leaks and lack of heat and so forth, were a big problem. And those, you know, all of that would be addressed in whatever kind of option we come forward, we come forward here with. I also, just kind of tagging on to Jay's comment, I'm very much against doing a temporary grade reconfiguration when we're going to have to be thinking about reconfiguration in a few years anyway, when we get a new school online. I mean, it would be disruptive even to begin with, just suddenly, oh, you're not going to this school. You're going over to this school, and it's a different grade configuration from what you had last year. And now, that would be, I think, very disruptive, and then especially to go through and do it all over again in several years. So, I mean, my preferred one was the, was option five, the partial reno of the core Wildwood spaces and add modulars. But then, that came in basically as the price of the senior center. So there you go. But I think that- So there you go. But I, I think that, that Stephen's absolutely right that it has to be, and I, you know, I mentioned this at the meeting, that we need to bring Wildwood up to a level that this is a place that we are comfortable, because it's, again, it's not just like when we, we talk about it temporary, but it's not like it's just for like one year. This is like people are gonna be in this for, you know, five years, let's say at least. And that's a lot of kids going through that school and that's a lot of years that we expect faculty to kind of stick it out and be around. And, you know, staffing is not so easy in education right now. People have a lot of choices in what districts they might want to be in and what schools that they want to spend their time teaching in. And if we can't give something that is adequate for the educational purposes for the staff and students, then we're gonna be, we're gonna be in some trouble.
Um, I, you know, I, I'll be repetitive. I was at that meeting the other night and I expressed a lot of concern around some of the proposed ideas to even, you know, for option number one, to partially renovate the Wildwood. And then discussions about, you know, trying to even cut that cost back by, you know, you know, can we not do a sprinkler system? I would a hundred percent not support anything along the lines of that. I don't think, I, 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 I trust that Doran Woodier looked at that space and when we're talking about a limited renovation is recommending like the bare bones of what would be, one, safe conditions for our children and our teachers to be in. So I, I would really struggle to, to sort of consider options to, to cut corners like that. I agree, David, in my mind, especially after reading the feedback from the Wildwood staff. I think that's really important. I really think we need to raise their voices in this process. I, I, I read repeatedly again and again that them being scattered in multiple places does not only create an equity issue for those students. We are talking about some of our most fragile kids. These are kids, you know, that are in a lot of special needs programs that are twenty-two percent of students at the Wildwood are children receiving special education services. So we, you know, that has to be factored into some of the decision-making. And I have worked in schools enough to know, I know exactly what they're talking about. They're, so some of the support staff, staff that are delivering these special ed services are having to go from building to building to building all across the town, which is obviously gonna result in kids, you know, time with a speech and language pathologist being shortened. These kids are definitely being short-changed right now. So that's why I was, you know, I was so disappointed in the numbers too, because in my head I thought, well, if we could keep them in a partially renovated Wildwood for the cafeteria purposes, but then have them in these modular classrooms and bring this community back together, because that is really what they need. And David's right, this is five or six years. This is not just a quick, short turnaround. So I really think we have to, I, I mean, I, I would love to sit with teachers and maybe we need to actually have roundtable conversations or something with teachers and not just a survey on paper over the computer, but something where we even said to them, what's better? Being back at the Wildwood but together in this scenario or, you know, this other scenario? So now that they've even, you know, had the opportunity to see some of these options, I would love for them to just give us their preferences so we can hear directly from the people that this is gonna impact the most. I also really agree with what MJ was saying from a family perspective. If I had a kiddo at, let's say at the north, but my Wildwood kiddo is at the Shaw Sheen. And I think we, I think you did a nice job really trying your best to, to, to keep kids as much as possible. But that's a real challenge. I can, I can just imagine having my kids starting school and ending school at different times of the day. So it, it's, it's a buy. I don't want to reconfigure grades temporarily either.
No, I, I, if I'm, I, I also share that and I believe I made, I mentioned of that at the building committee meeting. It seems clear to me that we as a community need to evaluate that with the capacity we have, at least at our secondary schools. But that can and should be explored through the initial phases of the study as we weave the, the Wildwood MSBA space analysis. I think it would be also wrong to, to step in that direction now when we truly don't know what the, the final larger direction will be for the Wildwood. So again, for, for those curious about that, we, we know we have some space. We think, I think we should explore it. But with careful and methodical planning to figure out what seems best for us, but not to back into that, so to speak, now, I, I think that could be concerning and problematic.
I, I, I don't know how many people on this board watched that last building committee meeting, but something that I just keep going back to in my head to almost like rectify or minimize these, these numbers is thinking about this. In, in some ways, this needs to get in our brains, like lumped into the overall cost of building a new Wildwood and not looking at it as an additional cost. Because I think that's where we will end up making a short-sighted decision and, and not doing what is sort of educationally best for the students and the teachers. And so in the long run, you know, it's such an unfortunate scenario because we will save less money in the end. But I keep coming back to my gratitude for the partnership with MSBA because that's how I'm sort of like justifying a different option perhaps versus the cheapest one. Sort of thinking, well, thank goodness we are partnering with MSBA because they're gonna help us support some of this cost in the end. And I don't know if, you know, thinking about it through that lens is helpful when those recommendations come to this board.
Tagging on that, I think that's a very good way to view it. But also, in some ways, it's also a view back because we were told by Mr. Hooper, there was a point in time where active maintenance or major maintenance programs at the Wildwood were stopped with the understanding that the building was no longer going to be used. So there's a potential amount of savings, may not be five million, over the last two or three years of maintenance that we didn't do, heavy maintenance and capital maintenance at that building. So in some ways, the five million or whatever number it ends up being is part of building the new building. But also it's part of what we didn't do and we saved them, the town saved some amount of money over the last few years and now we're paying that cost here. And so in terms of how you view the cost, that, the, the numbers are what they are, but there's, there's a way to understand that it's not strictly speaking for the five years. It's also for, you know, what the students had to live, and teachers and staff had to live through for the prior years before it was shut down and during the shutdown itself of the building. So it's, it is, it's good to view the cost through the full lifetime of the educational institution, the way you're describing it. Also, I think that's a very good way to view it.
So I think that, well, so I think we've come to some sort of conclusion, with some preliminary conclusions about grade reconfiguration and not being comfortable as a, as a board about that potential. So I think we have some useful information for you to bring back. I too agree that we need to hear from the, the teachers and administration over there. And we had talked a little bit about that as opposed to doing a survey. But so can you just share a little bit about what you're thinking in terms of communicating with them?
We, we had a con, we, we met today. We met face-to-face today, the central office team and the Wildwood staff.
Yeah.
I'm sorry if I didn't emphasize that. But yeah, we met today. We, we had some good conversation and certainly some information to be able to take back to the Wildwood Building Committee when we next meet.
Okay. And so what else do you need from us right now?
I, I, I don't believe anything, just to, you know, keep you plugged into all of this ongoing. I think the other thing to just let you know as a committee and certainly the community is the track of the MSBA is moving forward in the midst of all of this. We are on the, in the place of ramping up to hire an owner's project manager or OPM as it's called, referred to. And that process is well underway. Interested applicants are right now reviewing these projects and have to actually apply by October nineteenth. This is a very, very public process as governed by state law, I guess, if you will, procurement and such. And so I think the timeline is around the first part of December or sometime in December in which there will be an OPM brought on board to really serve, to coordinate and lead on behalf of the school committee and the town, all aspects related to the Wildwood MSBA project. So, so things are moving forward, I know slowly and it's a long, long journey that we're beginning. But it is a journey that's worth beginning. And I think the final thing that I'll say, it's been brought up in different conversations, not for tonight, but, you know, to keep the eye, it's a very complicated time right now, clearly, for the town as it relates to all of these different public buildings. But once or as we get through these buildings and that all gets sorted out, the comments were raised the other night and rightfully so. We need to cling to and we need to make sure that that master plan stays in play for the school department because our focus right now is on the, on the, the north side of town and absolutely what should be school consolidation for so many reasons. But we have to also as a town be thinking about the other side of town. You can only be in one MSBA project at a time. But, you know, it won't, time flies so quickly and just in terms of the, the magnitude of these costs as a community, I do think needs to be carefully considered, you know, for the totality of capital costs going forward. Because that was called out in the master plan. And, and I know schools is, are only one component of our public buildings, but obviously two very, very critical component. Anyway.
Thinking about the recommendation that's ultimately presented to us and what we'll be voting on to move forward, is it going to be just like an option or is there a price attached to it? Are we voting on an actual monetary capital request that has to go forward? Or is that a second, like, because it seems like there are two aspects to that, which is obviously which of these various options we're going to pursue. But ultimately, it has to be an appropriation at town meeting and so there has to be a monetary ask. How are those connected?
The, the, the connection has been drawn, I guess if you will, by the town manager and his recommendation or I guess recommendation around the fact that if there was any decision by this committee that also included a financial aspect, you know, most of those options, then that would, excuse me, that would move forward as part of our budgetary planning as, you know, in, in capital. And I know there might be, there has to be some discussion about how that plays out. But the decision to select option X that includes a cost of Y is what the town manager's request has ultimately been in terms of then identifying that Y cost to move forward so that they at the town level can appropriately plan for it from a fiscal standpoint. Fair to characterize that way?
So I'm still not clear on, are we, are we voting on a number as well as an option?
If there's an option that has a number, yes. I'm sorry, yes.
Yeah, I think you're essentially.
So that's what we're expecting to, to see in front of us, a recommendation from the building committee of, you know, option, let's be realistic, option one with X number attached to it.
Yes. I'm sorry for the confusion, yes. That's it for that.
How are we in this position? Yeah, Mrs. Palmer.
Sorry. Dr. Brand, whatever option for other people in the community also watching, whatever option is decided upon will not be implemented or in place until, we believe, the 2024 school year, correct?
If there's an option that involves construction, yes, that seems quite clear.
So in that case, will the students remain in the three buildings where they are currently? Because that would be all of this year.
That's right. Yes.
And then into the following.
Yes, and I, and I think, so yes, that is, that is true. And we would have to assess what, if any, additional resources might be necessary to, to better support those operations. Yes. And time to completion, time to completion here is also a factor of consideration, quite clearly. Yeah, which is problematic for this.
So at that meeting the other night, I was trying to sort of tease that out a little bit too. It's sort of like, is the timeline the same for every single option? Because to me, there's such urgency around this. If one option would shorten that timeframe, I feel like that should be factored. But my sense was that it's.
With, although I would say that I, I think that the conversation has started around possible ways, you know, it, if there's a fiscal aspect to this, can there, the question looms in terms of can there or should there be a special town meeting, which could, could accelerate to some degree this, this timeline as I understand it. But I'm not sure ultimately by how much, because I know that there's, I don't pretend to know all of the regulations and requirements around notice for town meeting and so on. So in the end, may, maybe, this is just myself speculating, you're saving a couple of months, I'm not sure. But I, there could be some ways, it seems, to at least get some things in motion without fully going forward so that maybe it's not the fall of 2024, but it's, you know, midway through that. You know, so maybe some time can be shaved. But time to completion is problematic with all of the current options that are in that study.
I believe that they said that there are some steps that can begin to go forward before town meeting so that the project can really kind of hit the ground running and everything doesn't have to wait on that. And that also, it's clearly wouldn't be ready for the beginning of the next school year. But then I believe that there might be some opportunity to complete the project before the end of the, of the school year. So, you know, a mid-year move is not necessarily ideal, but we did it for the high school. Been done before.
In, in the presentation, there was some rough estimates, nine to 10 months for option one to 11 to 12 months, 12 to 13 months. Again, that was estimates, you know, and it depends on market volatility and unpredictability and stuff. So, yeah, you're looking at it here.
Thanks for pointing that out.
And what David said too was, you know, he even spoke about that. Prior to town meeting possibly, just to, to jumpstart this. But, you know, again, that's, notice it to put it out.
All right. So you're, there's still some more information to gather. And so how will we learn, will we learn of that prior to our next meeting? Or will that be the 11?
Uh, no, we will learn about that as we're, you know, what, what we have this Wildwood Building Committee clearly set up to engage in this. I feel it critical that you as a committee are, are kept abreast of the developments too. So you'll, as information is forthcoming, I'll, I'll make sure that you as a committee have that as well too.
And then members can always reach to your office directly if they have questions or need to figure out some of these things. So don't hesitate if you have something that you feel like just can't wait. It'll be, it'll be a short timeframe in between, so I just want to make sure everyone feels like they're in a good spot. Okay. Resolutions and the MASC delegate annual convention selection vote. So why don't we start there? Because that's probably a little, who's going to MASC? Let's start there.
I think I'll be going on Friday.
I might be going on Friday. So, but, so MJ has always served as far as I'm, as far as, as long as I've been here as our delegate. And so are you? as our delegate, and so are you interested in serving as our delegate again?
If it's the will of the board.
I nominate MJ to serve as our delegate.
Okay, MJ, will you accept the nomination?
Sure, I'd be happy to.
So we have this first and a second, everyone in favor of electing, okay, that's unanimous.
Okay, thank you.
Voting for yourself? Just so much trust and love, MJ.
It is, thank you.
Very much.
Thank you.
We really do appreciate, I mean, I, I know, I think, I hope you enjoy it, I think you do. But we know that you, it's a big responsibility for you.
I do, and, oh, I, I enjoy, I enjoy the deliberation on the floor and, you know, what comes out of it. What I get nervous about is when they change course to the resolutions, and it's sort of like, kind of could go either way, making a guess for all of us, that becomes a little nerve-wracking for me.
Yep, we appreciate you, and thank you for your time. And so that brings us to the resolutions. David, are you going to walk us through this quickly? Ish. Not to say we shouldn't have discussion, if there's discussion to be had, but this is how we sort of ran it last year, and it seemed to work okay, so.
Yeah, so what I'm going to do is just simply read out the numbers of the six resolutions. And if anyone would like to discuss it, or is not basically going to vote yes, then raise your hand, and we'll just kind of flag that to come back to. If you have no objections to the resolution and are going to just vote in the affirmative, then just do nothing, and we'll see how many of those we...
Or call out "hold," I think that might be easier.
Sure, or you can just say, just like, "I'd like to hold that one," and then we'll come back to it. But in any case, indicate if you want to come back to it, or if we're all comfortable with, with something, then it can just sort of go through by consent and acclamation. So, we'll begin with Resolution One, which is titled, "Regarding Sanctuary Laws for Transgender Students." Resolution Two, "To Increase the Maximum Balance Allowed by the Special Education Reserve Fund."
Point of clarification, or should I...
Well, we'll hold, we'll hold that and come, and come back to that, so.
Thank you.
Resolution Three, "Membership of the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education." I would like to discuss that. Resolution Four, "Preserving Local Governance of Massachusetts Schools."
I don't understand that fully, so I'd love some conversation about that.
Resolution Five, "Personal Financial Literacy Education." And then Resolution Six, "Establishment of a Regional School Assessment Reserve Fund." Okay, so we, so we have approved Resolution One and Five. And we will come back now to Resolution Two for, for discussion. So this is to increase the maximum balance allowed by the Special Education Reserve Fund.
The question I had is, does this, how would this impact our particular situation? Does it have any bearing on how we would do our budget, or does it impin...
No, we don't have a Special Education Reserve Fund currently. This resolution, I mean, right now, if the municipality's school district set one up, it could be up to 2% of the national school spending. So I think we can increase that 2% to 5%.
All right, thank you.
Any questions, comments? My feeling on this resolution is that I don't understand the consequences of making this change in a way that I feel comfortable, basically giving assent to it. I don't know what changing the percentage from 2% to 5% would do. I don't know why it was set at 2% in the first place. And my recommendation would be to take no action on this resolution.
So, can I ask you a quick question? Excuse me.
Sure, MJ, go ahead.
So it says the 5% cap would allow for deeper investment of the municipality's own monies towards preventing mid-year budget crises, and positioning the school district to have the ability to provide an appropriate public education in the least restrictive setting to all students. The 5% cap would allow reserves to grow to a sustainable level, which hopefully would not be wiped out by a single year of special education-related costs. So, and I, I'm thinking, and let me just throw this out to you. About, I don't know, it could be about five years ago, the state of Massachusetts had a 9C budget cut, which we had this young man going back to the drawing table to figure out monies that we were appropriating, we weren't getting. And so he had to re-figure the spending. So I wonder if this, and quote me if I'm wrong, is tied into the municipa, like, I don't want to say the town's coffers, but that the town has to put aside certain money if the school gets, you know, if the budget gets impacted, whether it be budget cuts or things of that sort. I, that's what I think, that's what it almost sounds like.
Yeah, I'm sorry, that's from telling you this, but my understanding here is a district placed funds in this reserve fund, based on the funds from operating public. And then could be used if, as an example, you had three or four children in the district that had different...
So it's a non-budgeted, potentially large expenditure that the district is responsible for. So funds and money in this, in this type of fund could be used to offset some of that. I, I didn't read anywhere in here that it would, could be used to offset 9C cut-related...
Oh, no, I think it's specifically to special education.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, but that it does impact, because typically the circuit breaker is a part of that. So, and that would, it's one of the bigger impacts of meeting tuition, if we did get a 9C cut, that, in some respects, that could be a, a part of that.
Yeah, i- if, it depends on if circuit breaker, and I don't remember, if that's part of the 9C cuts. 9C cuts can't be just anything. There's certain categories of spending that, that can be cut.
So my thought on this was 2% wasn't enough for this particular district, and so they were like, uh-oh, we really need more. So I'm not, I'm, I'm not against supporting this, so we want to take a vote?
Well, I guess it depends on what we, what we vote, I mean, I...
So we have no action, I'm a yes, I mean, do we want to just see what that is, or no?
Well, here, I'll make a motion. I move to take no action on Resolution Two.
Can I clarify? No, no action, though, so we're just passing on it? So it's not declining?
It's like an abstention, basically.
Yeah, okay.
But just, I'll let you know, if the discussion on the floor could be very similar to what we're having here. If the discussion speaks to something specific, which they would have to amend into this resolution, just like we do at town meeting, that I, I possibly could, if comfortable enough, with, I think, additional clarification, could take a vote. But if it's left as written in this, because I think there is some ambiguity that, you know, Dave touched upon, that is reasonable, you know what I mean? It's, I don't, you know, but I just wanted to clarify the position at the delegate, the, the assembly piece. If it reads like this, then I'll, I'll definitely hold, certainly hold our vote to just not vote.
We have a motion, but no second, so is there a second to the motion?
I'll second David's motion.
All right, any further discussion on the motion? As I said, to me, it's basically that someone had a good reason for thinking that 2% was an appropriate limit at some point, and I don't understand why, what that reason was, and if this is a better number. And so I simply want to say, leave it to the people who actually are in this, in this area to have a little choice.
So vote.
Any other discussion? All right, all in favor of the motion?
Of holding.
Of... Of favor of the motion, which is to abstain and take no action with regard to Resolution Two.
You didn't ask what we voted. What if I, well, maybe I was going to abstain, you don't know if I was a no.
Oh, okay.
So we should have our proper...
Goes for the resul...
All right, who?
That's cracking, we're cracking.
Wow.
Who is opposed to the motion? Motion passed, it's five-two.
Tracy needs to have that information.
You're going to abstain from an abstention. Abstentions all the way down. Not sure that... All right, let's move this along, all right. Resolution...
I like your task.
Great.
Resolution Three, I'm not, I didn't, I didn't put the timestamps. "Membership of the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education."
I'm just going to stop putting timestamps on them.
So, discussion.
Point of clarification on this one and the one that follows. Both of them said, the one, Resolution Three says, "Whereas the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education has the power to choose a receiver to replace an elected school committee." And number four says, "Whereas the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education has exercised its power to take over school districts."
That's receivership, stake receivership.
So the board has one authority only for receivership, and DESI has an authority for educational attainment? Are they two different authorities? Are they the same? Are they the same group? Are they, I, I'm very confused by...
So the, the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education can, has the authority to place a district into receivership, which is, it has done three times up to this point. In Resolution Three, they are simply essentially mentioning that as a power to choose a receiver as part of, I think, a general description of that this is a powerful body that wields, you know, a lot of authority, and then goes on to describe why they think there should be changes to its composition, or at least to the, the rules for, for its composition. The Resolution Four is directly addressing the actual issue of, of district receivership, and arguing that there should be limits on district receivership.
So the board says it should be in receivership, and then DESI is the group that actually acts on the, the management once it's in receivership?
That's right. So, yeah, the board vote authorizes DESI to, and then the commissioner appoints a receiver for the district.
Thank you, that helps.
But Resolution Three is, is changing the, the makeup and membership of the board of elementary.
I, I wasn't there yet, I was still trying to understand what the two boards did.
Oh, 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 oh.
So right now, right now, the...
It's the school committee to...
Right now, the Mass General laws specifically exclude people who are paid by and employed by...
School districts.
School districts, basically any school or DESI, and also sitting school committee members from serving on the, on the board. And that's what this resolution is arguing to change.
I have a, I have a question on this, and if other people, if you see the same parallels. And, and I don't, and I don't know if they, and I don't know if they are the same here on this resolution, and I think I need some clarification on it. So if I were a teacher in the Wilmington Public Schools, right? It's, let me step back for a second, trying to draw a parallel between the State Board of Education and a school committee, right? So try to follow me. So if you're a teacher in the Wilmington Public Schools, right? It would likely be a conflict of interest for you to work on the school committee to be a teacher in the Wilmington Public Schools and be on the Wilmington School Committee.
Right, you can, right.
It would, it would bring up, people would ask some questions, right? That would be a potential conflict of interest.
That would implicate the conflict of interest law.
But, but, you know, but the thing is, is you're, that doesn't prohibit, we've had district employees sit as active school committee members. They would have to recuse themselves from quite a lot of things because of their, they're employees of the district, but they're not prohibited from doing so.
So my question is, would the rationale of that conflict of interest between a public school employee and a local school committee versus an employee, a teacher in the state, and the State Board of Education? Would it be a similar, do, do people think it would have that similar conflict of interest if you tried to create those two parallels? And I don't know the answer to that question, I don't know what any of the other people think about.
Wouldn't it be similar to the makeup of our board right now, Jay? We've got an educator, an educator here, you don't work for Wilmington, but you have that educational insight, and, and David, we've got that realm, too, because you've got this, that state piece. But all your interests and your experience from, from the path that you walk contribute to the direction and the discussion of the decisions we make on behalf of all the students here in Wilmington. But you're talking about, you're talking about teachers, you're not talking, you may be talking about one district out of 355. So there's a broad enough, this, you know what I mean? There's a broad enough span that it's not something that could be brought into one, because the Board of Education, in, in, the, excuse me, the, the BOE makes the decisions on behalf of all of the Commonwealth schools, not particular districts. Except with the receivership piece, and if that, let's say Wilmington were to, God forbid, go into receivership, then that board member out of, well, how many, are there, Dave, six, seven?
How many?
How many board members on the BOE?
Eleven.
Eleven. So you've had one person having to recuse themselves from that conversation if perhaps they were a resident, because that's their taxpayer. You know, that's, I just didn't know if...
I understand what you're saying, and I don't know if I'm overcomplicating the issue here by, by asking this question. Because it seems to me, when I read, when I read this resolution, this, it, it makes sense. I think that there should be, you know...
Representation.
Representation on the board from educational professionals. I think that makes sense. But if there is some conflict of interest that I'm not seeing, whereas I can see it pretty clearly between school committee and a public school, and like Wilmington School Committee, Wilmington Public Schools employee, I can see that. I can't necessarily see it on the other side, and so I'm just curious if other people can, you know, is there anybody who thinks this is a bad idea? And, you know, can sort of explain why that would, this would be a bad idea? I guess that's, I overcomplicated the issue.
No, no.
I apologize, my apologies.
I, I completely agree with you on both parts of it. I, I was initially said, well, of course, educators should be on that, that it's, it's probably a bad idea that they're not. I don't know if there's a conflict of interest, I think that's a good question. I, I don't see that it would be particularly, to, to Ms. Bren's point, I, I do think there's enough dispersion that the number of times you'd have to accuse yourself would be fairly small, as opposed to somebody sitting on this group that, that was a teacher in town, they'd have to accuse themselves fairly often. I, I think, I think it's probably okay, but it's a good question. I don't know if you guys have any thoughts on, on that side.
Well, I mean, I think that, that the basic rationale is that the board holds, you know, authority over a great deal, over all education policy in Massachusetts, and therefore implicates, you know, the district of any sitting school committee member, and also the, you know, the school of any, you know, working, working educator. And that that's, I'm assuming, the, the basic reason why, why that prohibition is there. Which would be very similar for, for, you know, a licensed Wilmington team. So obviously, it's different for you. Like, you know, serving on the board would be different, because it covers all of Massachusetts. Serving on our board is not affecting your school district.
Right.
Which, which makes it, which makes it different.
I'd like to take a motion, if the discussion is over, to vote yes to the motion, to the resolution.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? We have a motion and a second. All right, all in favor of the motion? And all opposed? All right, Resolution Four, Preser, preserving local governance of Massachusetts schools. So this has to do with the board's exercise of the receivership, and resolving, I think, two things, that the receivership, the current receiverships should be concluded by July 2023, and that the law should be changed to place a three-year limit on receiverships in the future.
It also speaks to, forgive me, about excluding school committees from having any governance role in... In, in, they're removing the power of the school committee, which, since they're elected officials of their municipality, if I'm correct, hang on, where is this? Yeah, they remove the respective school committees from their governing roles that they were elected into. So the state can't supersede elected officials, they should be able to work with them, I think that's... I think that's one of the elements to this resolution that is changing, that they'd like to change is the removal of governance of the school committee. For, in, in, when a district is, um, going into receivership, which I think it's critical to have your governing board to work with the state to bolster. It's the same mission. It's the same intent. I, I like that aspect of this. And I don't know what the records of the districts that were currently in receivership, how many after a three-year period got out of that receivership? That's something I haven't looked into recently. And so that was a question I had for the brains of the board.
I can, I can address, I can address some of that. None of them have, once they've been put into receivership, they have not moved out of receivership. The, all of the school committees in all of those communities that are put into receivership have absolutely no say in, they might have say, but they don't have voting power. The, in, essentially, the state has said, you, you guys, you're not doing things the right way. So we're going to step in and we're going to take over control for an infinite number of years. We're removing local control of your schools because we've determined that they're not working. Underperforming. So we're going to take over and we're going to do a better job. They haven't done a better job. And they're taking away, you know, Lawrence Holyoke, Southbridge, that local control. And if you look at, you know, not to go too far off the rails here on this, but you're also talking about, uh, communities of color that they're removing the control from. I one hundred percent support this resolution. I, you know, working in a, you know, working in Boston, and everybody is probably aware that Boston has its, has its issues and was, there was a very real potential of receivership, um, for the Boston Public Schools. Um, and, and, and that's a scary, a scary thought. And to listen to the people, um, from these districts, like, you know, Lawrence Holyoke and Southbridge, you know, it is, it is very, there's no path forward out of this. There's a lot that needs to be done. And I think that supporting this, I think as a school committee, it's, you know, this is the, this is the state, you know, removing the power of school committees. And that's not what the laws of Massachusetts were created for. They're created to have school committees be the voice of these communities. And the state decides that they can remove that. And that, to me, is, is wrong on every level.
I'll second Jay.
So I, I don't disagree at bottom with the receivership. I think that, um, I think that the lack of limitation and the just open-ended, no, you know, no X, no benchmarks, no, you know, outcome, nothing that says just like, all right, and it's either time limited or we hit these goals and then we turn, uh, turn control back over to, uh, you know, to the community. Um, I think is problematic. Um, I mean, in the individual cases, I mean, Lawrence has been in receivership for the longest. It's going on eleven years now. And they really made, they made really strong progress at the beginning. And, uh, and they had a lot of dysfunction. And in the first five or six, you know, five or six years, there was steady progress. It's really kind of plateaued now. So it probably should have been taken out long, you know, before, long before now. Southbridge was basically begging for receivership, um, at the time because that district was so dysfunctional. They were just like cycling through superintendents. They weren't even lasting a year, um, constantly with interims and staff turnover. And the community was kind of in turmoil. And, you know, that's been a little bit kind of pulled, pulled together. But I think there do need to be some, some limitations on how long, on how long these last. I'm not sure that, uh, that three years is maybe the right number. I think if I were picking the, the number, I would maybe go with five. I think that, you know, it's, it's enough time that you really can institute and instill some changes. But if you haven't done what you intended to go in and do in five years, then it's like, all right, you had your time. And I think the, uh, you know, the local community gets to run its schools again.
Ask a point of clarification then. Could we support the resolution, but request potentially an amendment to change the number of years? Could that be part of our?
Yeah, we can, we can, we can move to amend the resolution and approve it amended. And then present that and then make that same motion, um, at the delegate assembly.
Would you like to put forth a motion?
I'm just intrigued. So this is by Arlington School Committee. So in many of these, so normally I feel like these are, come from MASC.
No, a lot of, a lot of the times they come from Framingham.
Yeah.
They're the ones who drive all, yeah.
But I feel like this time, I'm just, it's, it's interesting to see who's proposing and why.
It's always interesting.
Yeah, I'm like, hmm.
And they're actually on both three and four.
I saw.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I'm just intrigued, that's all. Okay, sorry. Is there a motion to amend to five years? Is that a motion?
I'll make that motion, yeah.
For a second?
The, 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 we express our support with the provision that we would encourage it to be amended to be five instead of three.
Well, we, we'd have to, um, I'd have to write the amendment down, um, and submit it after bringing a fourth. So I'll have to write that down.
And then, but I think it's a very simple, because we just say change no more than three years to no more than five years, just substituting, just substituting one word.
All right. So there's a motion and a second, I think, Jesse. Yeah.
Any further discussion? All right, all in favor of amending the motion or amending the resolution to five years? All in favor? Okay, that's unanimous. Now, as amended, uh, we need a motion to approve the resolution as amended. And seconded, any further comment? All right, so, uh, all in favor of approving the resolution as amended? All right, and that is unanimous. I would also like to propose that, um, if the, if this amendment fails at the delegate assembly, that we authorize MJ to vote in favor of it as, as it stands.
You cool?
I'll second. Is that a, is that a move? Did you move that? You moved it, I second.
I make a motion to do that thing I just said.
I'll second that thing you just said.
Well, you know, I.
I'll say yes to that thing.
Okay.
MJ make it good.
Absolutely. I think they do it, I think the, the assembly's on Wednesday this year.
Uh, resolution five, we expensed with, that's part of our agenda, we'll call it. Uh, resolution six, establishment of a regional school assessment reserve fund.
Point of clarification. If Wilmington were to establish a regional school assessment reserve fund, would that then impact our budgeting process? Because presumably that would be a way to mitigate increases in flex, uh, variations with the Shawshing Tech budget. Would it help our budget process if it smoothed the Shawshing Tech requests? Or would it hurt our budget because filling that reserve fund might take away from money towards the school budget, the Wilmington school budget?
We're not, we wouldn't affect us because we're not part of a regional.
Well, Wilmington as a town is part of a regional district.
No.
We're part of Shawshing Tech.
No, why not?
Right, but that's not a regional school district, even.
Funding mechanism.
It's different. It's a.
It's like when you have a tri-town like Townsend, like.
Right, we are a member of the Shawshing Valley Technic, you know, vocational technical district.
It is not a regional, that's not a regional district that overlays our town?
I mean, it is obviously in that it's, it's made up of students from five towns.
So this is only regional schools, not technical schools?
So you have communities who come together for one school? That's okay.
Like small.
I, I took them as the same type of district.
Yeah, no, no, no. You'll find out when you go, go to conference, you'll, you'll, Western Mass a lot of regional because they, they don't have money to operate by themselves.
The small towns that have to combine.
Yeah, no, I, I understand, yeah.
A little different than a vote.
I, I think the VOTECs work differently, even though they, even though they do obviously pull from different towns.
Okay. I just misunderstood that they weren't two.
Regional vocational.
That's what it says in the name, right?
Regional, regional technical vocational school districts as opposed to regional school districts. There's, they're like separated out.
I was confused by this, that I did not realize there were two different types of districts. I knew what regional school districts were and I thought the vocational ones were a form of. Okay. Then I have no questions.
They get better funding too.
On this particular topic at this exact moment in time.
All right.
My feeling on, on this, uh, resolution is the same on resolution two, which is that I think we should take no action on this. I don't know the trade-offs that are being made. Whether, whether this is a wise thing to change or not.
I, I second. Was that a motion?
It wasn't, but.
But it can be. It is, it is now.
But it is now. I move that we take no action on this resolution and abstain.
I second that motion.
All right.
All right, uh, motion is second. Any discussion? All in favor of taking no action on this resolution? All right, and that is unanimous. And that is our.
That's it.
MASC. That'll be good assembly business.
All right, my friends, thank you very much. We're moving on to other reports. Are there any subcommittee reports?
Um, I just want to put a plug in for the WEF Walk, which is, um, underway essentially in terms of flyers going home with students and, um, families looking to, um, get community support, financial community support to support all the good work that WEF does in providing grants to our educators and our, and our schools. So please be on the lookout for that and, um, yeah, please be on the lookout for that.
I don't, on the.
Your five schools should be getting printed flyers if they haven't already.
Yes, and you can also go to thewilmingtoneducationfoundation.org. And there is a QR code. So they've done such a great job making it seamless and very easy for families to, um, to donate. Um, and this is for grades for the elementary schools. Um, and then shortly after the WEF Walk is finished, which is actually happening on Monday, Halloween, actual Halloween. And Wildcat Willie will be making the rounds. Be on the lookout for the middle school and high school fundraiser, which is Cards for a Cause. And, um, I've heard, I don't know if anybody's ever purchased a box of cards. They, they do like holiday cards or just thank you cards or whatever, but I've heard they're really fantastic. So WEF is just fantastic and we are so grateful for them. They just met this past week. You heard from CPAC today. Um, those are all my reports.
I'll just, uh, make, uh, just a very quick update that the Equity Subcommittee met, uh, last week to begin taking apart the Equity Audit. And it's very big and very dense. Um, and we are working our way through it. We're going to meet again next week. But just to, so the rest of the committee knows is we are working very hard at doing a deep dive on that data.
Thank you.
And, uh, the Policy Subcommittee also met and, uh, we discussed the transportation policy. So this came out after the Transportation and the School Start Time Working Group, um, had put together some, some information. And so we, uh, discussed the issues of the transportation policy in terms of distance from school and the consistency of, you know, how we apply, how we apply that and where bus stops are located. And, um, Stephen, what was the second one that we, uh, that we talked about?
Field trips, medication?
Uh, that's right. We talked about, yeah, talked about field trips and, uh, chaperoning for kids who need medication with life-threatening allergies and, uh, and found basically some areas to go back and do. We got some homework from that to bring back to the next, to the next time we meet.
We anticipate seeing some policies come to us?
Uh, I think.
At some point?
Yeah, at some point, at some point, yeah, at some point I expect that, um, that.
Um, the Budget Subcommittee met a couple of weeks ago. Our next meeting is, I may have already reported on this. Our next meeting is on the twenty-sixth. Although we don't have a school committee meeting that night, we will still have our budget meeting. We just started talking through sort of the process. Paul was there, Glenn, John Doherty, Jessie, Stephen, and myself. Is that right? Um, so we started a document on priorities and what do we call it?
Priorities and guidelines. Priorities and guidelines.
Guidelines.
Priorities, so they were kind of, yeah, so that's really what we spent a lot of time, clearly a lot of time talking about. Our priorities and then budget guidelines.
Most of the meeting was coming up with a name for that document.
It was inaccurate. It was a debate as to whether or not they were priorities or guidelines.
I was looking for my minutes, but I don't see them in there. Um, but it was, I thought it was a productive meeting. It was a good first meeting to get started. I thought we talked a little bit about like kind of our vision for where we hope this will go. And I think it'll be a pretty consistent Subcommittee, so I'm excited to see, um, what we do with it. Everyone's so busy. So I thank you. Thank you very much for all this work and all these meetings and watching meetings that you're not at. It's quite, it's quite impressive. Um, correspondence?
None this evening.
And so our future school committee dates, just another, um, a plug for CPAC tomorrow, tomorrow night is the Basic Rights Workshop. Eleven to three is the who's who in the Special Education Department. November eighth is our, is the state election. The polling locations are listed here. November ninth, we have our regular session meeting here at seven o'clock. The following week, we have a regular session meeting here at seven o'clock. And then November nineteenth is the special town meeting at nine AM at Wilmington High School. Thank you all very, very much for your, your time and attention to all of these very important matters. We appreciate it. Um, and I think that's it. So.
Move to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor? Excellent. Good night.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Oh, and have a good time at MASC, those of you who are going.